All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Village Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, December 21st. It is 6:30 on my watch. We are unfortunately continuing to hold these meetings via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So those that want to link into the Zoom, it's on the top agenda. There's both the computer laptop connection there to the video, or an audio connection is also listed with the phone number as well. The Zoom is being recorded and including the chats, so just make everybody aware of that. And we'll start with a roll call to ensure that we have the board here.
Allen.
President.
Lindbergh.
President.
Murphy.
Present.
Ratcliffe.
Present.
Valencia.
Present.
Andrew Valdi.
Present.
Ann Williams.
Present. All right, thanks, Lisa. We have a quorum, the agenda was properly posted. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please find your nearest flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on then to item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. We did have one submitted form, so I don't know if Jeremy Holiday is on yet.
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, Jeremy, can you state your name, which you've already done, but where you live, and then obviously the item that you particularly want to speak on? And as we let folks know, we would like to try to limit that to three minutes, just in case we have others that want to speak.
My name is Jeremy Holiday, I live on the east side of Madison. I wanted to speak on the library item on the agenda this evening. I'll be pretty quick. I just had three things that I wanted to say. Some of you know, some of you may not, I'm also the president of Madison United Rugby, the rugby organization that owns and operates the Wisconsin Rugby Sports Complex there in Bakken Park. And I think a public library would be a great idea in Cottage Grove for three main reasons. Number one, as an organization, one of the things that we do to expand our reach regionally and nationally is to submit bids to host various tournaments. And everything that, anything that Cottage Grove adds as an amenity is something that we can put on our tournament bid when we're planning things out. And one of the things that happens with national collegiate tournaments is they're often organizations of coaches, referees, and people that develop the game that can't meet during the year, they're usually busy, so they'll meet at tournaments. So oftentimes, they'll be looking for conference space and hotels so they can come on Thursday, do their national meeting, do their stuff, and have their teams play on Friday and Saturday. So the presence of conference rooms and a public library would be great for that. And it just allows us a better and more competitive location. A lot of the times, we'll be competing with things in much larger cities where people have to contend with traffic, so we already have an advantage. So if we can offer the same kinds of things without having to wade through traffic to get places, it gives us a really strong advantage. Number two, I'm a dad and I have a 12-year-old and an eight-year-old, and we go to the public library religiously even in COVID. And it's something that, I mean, when we bought our new house, we, getting it within walk it isn't have a public library is one of the deciding factors. So I was really excited when I heard talk, I know it's not new talk, but heard very concrete talk about putting a library in Cottage Grove. I don't live there, but I spend a lot of time there, and my kids, we go to the playground at Bakken Park. We're excited about the new splash pad as well, so it would be a big benefit there. Third thing in our wrap-up is, is the poetic point, but I always, when looking for places to live, I look at a public library like birdsong in a forest. I mean, if you walk into a section of forest and you hear those sounds of nature, you generally know that it's a healthy place, right? It's not like a swamp where it's, you know, it's silent. And various communities and places around this part of Wisconsin, when they have a strong commitment to everybody in the community and to the public good, there's usually a public library or two in those areas. And I'd be really excited to, you know, voice my support for a public library and also help support it in other ways in the future. That's what I got.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Anybody else from the public, I'll pause and allow anybody else to chime in.
Just stop talking.
Oh, I think it's on with their audio.
Not in part of the meeting, am I?
All right. Move on then to item five is to discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular board meeting minutes from December 7th. Any comments, questions, edits, or motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 7th, 2020 meeting as presented.
Paul second.
Second.
Thank you, Heidi, thank you, Paul. Any further discussion? Having heard, not all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain?
I abstain, I was not present.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, motion approved. Moving on then to, we were fortunate enough to get a presentation from a very busy committee. The Library Planning Committee this last year has been working very hard, and they would like to present their findings. I'll bring up, Melissa, do you have an order of presenters? Or is this something you're going to go through, or how's that going to work?
Yes, thank you. Is it possible for Michelle Roach to share her screen? She has the presentation available.
This is Michelle, I believe that I can, so I will go ahead and get that started.
Great, and then Ann Shinaman will start us off.
Does that look good to everybody? Melissa, thumbs up.
Yep, looks good.
Okay, great.
I just need a minute here to... Well, hello, everyone, and thank you for attending the meeting. I see we have a lot of visitors, and I know some people have sent messages to the board. My name is Ann.
Presentation on the library.
If you have your microphone on, will you check and make sure it's mute, please?
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you. I'm a member of the Library Planning Committee, and we're here to share about the survey results and some current library information with the Village Board. Slide two, please. Our presentation includes these topics. Let me give you a little bit of an overview. The Village Board Director Committee to Survey Cottage Grove Residents and Interview Local Businesses to Determine the Level of Importance and Support for Local Public Library. In addition, the committee researched library budget information, learned about library usage, and created a map of little free library locations in our community. And you can get that from the Department of Recreation. It's also online. The Library Planning Committee was created in November of 2019. The committee met two or three times per month, usually on the first Wednesday for an hour or two. Individuals also worked on their own while researching and writing up information. Agendas and minutes were submitted to the village hall staff. Slide three. Our committee members include myself, I'm Ann, and I'm in the top-left corner.
I'm Melissa Ratcliffe, the village trustee and chair of the Library Planning Committee.
I'm Tiffany Haas, I'm the Monona Grove School District representative and also a resident of the village of Cottage Grove.
I'm Cindy Cal Nelson, I'm a resident of Cottage Grove.
And I'm David Peterson, also a resident, thanks.
Thank you. So, next slide, please. Over this year, John's right, we have done a lot of work. In summary, we have met with key members of the library services, Tracy Harold and Mark Ibach. We've learned a lot from them about library services, capital and operating budget components, revenue sources, as well as bookmobile information. We've read legal documents and professional articles. The committee met with individuals in the library field to learn about what a library staff does uniquely for the community to meet the needs and the desires of their patrons, and how important public libraries are to support local schools. The committee developed the library survey and reviewed survey question items with several individuals. The household survey was published online and opened from September 15th through October 15th of this fall. Business interviews were completed during this time. This late fall, the group completed the survey data analysis, wrote the report, and created this PowerPoint presentation. And I would like to note that Michelle Roach is here, she's the CEO of Promote Local, and she was a big help in this project this past year. Melissa?
Thank you, Ann. I'm doing the financials overview. In order to try to determine the capital and operating expenses associated with the new library, the Library Planning Committee met with DCLS and SCLs staff. We first looked at comparable municipalities with public libraries in Dane County and throughout the state. This is attached as Appendix Three in the report. What we determined is that the cost of building a library, the capital portion of funding, is highly variable based on the size of the library and the services the community wants in it. We were unable to determine the cost of building a library for our community at this time. And looking at Appendix Three, you'll see communities of our size have libraries ranging from 16,000 square feet to 24,000 square feet, which makes the capital cost a wide range, in addition to building costs being variable from year to year. They'll need more resident input before we can determine the size of a library that will meet our community's needs. We did learn that the capital funding for building a library can come from various sources. Fundraising for the capital campaign, including donations from the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library and possible grants, as well as from the village borrowing funds. The amount that the village would contribute to funding the building of a library can be determined at a later date. Any amount the village would contribute for building a library wouldn't be borrowed until a certain dollar amount was raised by the capital campaign. The Village Board would determine this amount after more information is obtained to determine the size of the library, and as we continue to gather the information required by the Department of Public Instruction, Division of Libraries, and Technology. As for operating expenses, which are noted in Appendix Five of the report, the yearly funding can come from sources other than just the municipality and includes funding from the Friends of the Library Group, payments from Dane County Library Service, adjacent county payments, grants, and local foundations. Appendix Four to the report shows a sample operating budget for the village based on Dane County library standards. The sample budget is variable based on the number of hours it is open and what services the library will have. Additionally, while this estimated operating budget is about $500,000, these yearly operating expenses do not necessarily come out of village funds, as noted in Appendix Five. The Village Board can determine the amount paid in yearly operating expenses from the village budget as more information is obtained on the wants and needs of our community. Appendix Three, going back to Appendix Three, it shows that the municipality pays a certain amount for operating expenses, as noted in the blue column, compared to the actual amount spent on library operating expenses, as noted in the last green column. The difference between those numbers are from sources other than the municipality's budget. Currently, village residents pay over $273,000 in Dane County taxes for the use of other communities' libraries. The town of Cottage Grove residents paid over $180,000 in Dane County taxes for the use of other communities' libraries as well. If we had a library here, village residents would no longer pay those taxes to Dane County that go to other communities with libraries, and most of that funding would stay in our village. Next slide, and on to, who's next, Cindy, Cindy Cal Nelson.
Yep, so I'm, in the next two slides, we're going to review alternatives the village has to a physical library. This includes, like Melissa mentioned, the Dane County Bookmobile and the village's little free libraries. So on this slide here, and I apologize if you can hear my kids in the background, is regarding the bookmobile. So the Dane County Library Bookmobile has come to the village of Cottage Grove since 1966. The bus collection offers books, magazines, movies on DVDs, and music and books on CDs. The bookmobile is equipped with Wi-Fi, and residents can pick up materials and return items. The bookmobile is currently scheduled to be in Cottage Grove three hours, one day a week, which is on Wednesdays, you can see the times and locations on this slide. This is the only time area residents can return or obtain new materials while in the village. The bookmobile is not handicap accessible, but the friendly staff is very willing to step off the bus and answer questions and fill requests. Additionally, with special request, the Dane County Outreach Librarian provides resources to seniors and coordinates visits to our local daycare centers. So currently in Cottage Grove, there are 949 library card holders with Cottage Grove addresses that use the bookmobile. This graph represents the number of uses. So examples are books or items checked out using their library card in each of the years 2014 through 2018. And so the blue bars is used at the bookmobile. The orange bars are Cottage Grove used at other library branches. So as you can see, the regression line demonstrates a downward trend over this time period for the bookmobile, with Cottage Grove usage at other physical library locations increasing. So an additional point that our committee considered was that these trends are also correlating to library money leaving the Cottage Grove community, which Melissa also mentioned. Slide. The other alternative the village has to a physical library location are the little free libraries that are located around town. So originally, there are four little free libraries that were purchased by the Friends of Cottage Grove Library Incorporated back in the early 2000s. The village of Cottage Grove installed and maintains these four little free libraries. However, area residents have set up a lot of other little free libraries. And so one thing our Library Planning Committee did was ask village residents for the addresses. We drove around and verified those addresses, and then we created this map, which you see on your slide. It's also listed in the report. And as Ann mentioned, it's posted online on the Cottage Grove Parks and Recreation Department website. And now, as of this fall, there are 18 little free libraries in Cottage Grove.
Next up, I'm going to discuss just the survey methods of how we went about this. So first, you guys had approved the survey that we were going to send out in September. But how we came up with this is that our questions were developed with a conjuncture of experts from UW Madison. We talked to local librarians. The Dane County Library Director helped us out, and also directors of other public libraries. We reached out to experts because we wanted to make sure that when we sent this out to the village that we had a balanced and effective survey. So we tried to make sure we reached every single household. We had a postcard sent to every residence address that we had. And then we also used social media platforms, local organizations, and we also contacted businesses to get this out. We did this in order to make sure that we could have as many residents and that our results were going to show what the village is really saying, if there was support or not support. So residents had the option to take the survey online, or they could call a Library Planning Committee member for assistance. And we also had an introduction video to the survey. And in addition, we also made sure that it was available in English and in Spanish. Next slide.
My turn, thank you. So, walking through some of the results that we had here, right? So, we have here some of the takeaways. We had a total number of participants is 815. You will see in the appendix, we do have all of the questions and their results. Total number of participants is 815. The number of responses of each question may vary because participants occasionally skip some questions. For this one, for this particular slide, 81% of respondents are from the village. 16% came from the town, and then we had 2% that were writing. Others resided in like Monona, Madison, Lake Mills, Cambridge, Sun Prairie, and individuals who work in Cottage Grove. So, good things here, next slide, please. Kind of breaking it out per age group. Approximately 2,300 households are in the village. Actually, I'll get that back, that's on the next slide. So, this is the breakdown of demographics by age group. 19 to 65-year-olds was the largest group. You know, that is also the largest range there, but kind of interestingly is that the elementary students, the five to 10-years-olds, made up the second-largest age group at 16%. Just to point out, this question was, please list the number of people in your household and the age groups that they're in. So, one person per household was asked to fill out the survey. So in my house, for example, if my wife and I would be in the 19 to 65-years-of-age category, and then I have three children, two in the five to 10-years-olds, and then one in the 11 to 14-years-of-age. So just to kind of give you an example there. Next slide, please. I guess we took that one out.
Michelle, can you find slide 10?
Looks like it's taken out. Just to kind of reiterate here, I mean, approximately 2,300 households are in the village, as Tiffany outlined. We did deliver all, same last name, same address were deleted from the list. The list came from the Public Works Department. And approximately 26% of the household village took the survey. So, we can go to the next slide, I think we can go to, next one, there we go.
Okay, thank you, David. So let's look at the data from the household survey. And, again, I just need to... Sorry, I'm trying to get away from the full screen here. There we go. The quotes that you see on some of the slides come right from the survey participants, and the complete survey and the data, again, is in the printed report. So, slide 13, Michelle, it says, "How important are certain library services to our participants in the survey?" And the top three most important responses were literacy programs for all ages, access to free eBooks and audiobooks, and access to other borrowing materials. Next slide, this one was a little different. It asked what was most important, but it asked about library building spaces. And the three top most important responses were children's reading and play area, comfortable spaces in the library, and outdoor book and material drop-off available 24/7. Okay, Cindy.
Okay, so the next few slides are going to review the data that demonstrate how the village feels about their overall importance, overall interest in the library services, library spaces, and then the building of the physical library location. So this, just to orient you to these slides, on the x-axis, so it's across the bottom, we have a five-point Likert scale that we chose to use. So on the left is extremely important, which is then scaled all the way to the right, which is not important at all. On the y-axis, so that's the running vertically, is the percentage of survey respondents. And then what we also have done is included the number of responses for each category within the bars of the chart. So as you can see, this is in response to the question of how important are library services to you and your family? 47% said they are extremely important. 22% said they are very important. And this is compared to the relatively low numbers at the end of the scale. Somewhat important, 7%, a little important, 5%, and then not at all important, at 16%. Slide. I do want to just also make a note that in the original submission to the Village Board, the x-axis was incorrect on this graph, and on the next slide. And what we're presenting today is the accurate version, and I believe you all received an updated report yesterday or today. So, this is the second question of overall importance in the library building spaces. So this graph, again, has the same scaling on the x, the Likert scale gauging level of importance, all the way from extremely important to not important at all. Again, on the y-axis is going to be your percentage of respondents showing the same representation of data. So when it comes to building a library buildings, physical spaces, over 50% said these are extremely important. About 17% said these are very important, and on the other hand, about 30% said somewhat a little or not important at all. So when it comes to interest in building a library in Cottage Grove, so building a physical library location within the village, about 70% of survey respondents said they are extremely or very interested in building a library. About 30% of respondents said somewhat a little or not interested at all collectively. And I just want to make a note here that we've combined, when I say 30%, at the low end, I'm combining those last three categories, which is a pretty conservative interpretation of the data because there's still some level of interest represented in those two categories at the end. Slide. And then our committee wanted to take this one step further and sort the data and report the responses by only, by those who live only within the village. So we got that information from question number one. And as you can see in this graph, the percentages are really not significantly changed from the previous slide, with about 69% interested, so that's 450 village respondents were extremely or very interested in building a library. 31% are 209 respondents, somewhat a little or not interested, not at all interested. And again, this is, I think, probably one of the most conservative interpretations of this dataset that we're presenting here tonight. But overall, I think that, you know, the general takeaway here is that there's a very, very high level of interest from village residents regarding the building of a physical library in Cottage Grove.
So next, we're going to go into the business survey because on top of surveying the residents, we also wanted to know what businesses thought, and do they feel that a physical library would be something that they would be interested in? And so what we did was, we surveyed 15 businesses randomly throughout Cottage Grove, and us from the Library Planning Committee called and had a conversation with them. Next slide, please. So the results, if I just, if I just went straight to the end, we had 15 out of 15, 100% say, yes, we would really be interested in having a physical library building. And I just want to go over some of the reasons why, so that's actually on the next slide.
And I just want to go over some of the reasons why. So that's actually on the next slide. It's pretty quick. So the big takeaways and quotes that we had from the survey is that businesses, they feel like they have nowhere to meet right now if they wanted to meet outside of their office building or out of their shop or, you know, they work out of their home. They would love a place where they have spaces to meet with clients and customers. So having access to Wi-Fi, a private meeting room, and an opportunity to present to people in the village, people in the town, and have a, just a private modern meeting room was something that was really, really an exciting point for many of our business owners. They also mentioned the idea that while their customers are waiting for them or they have time until their next appointment, they're, right now, village residents really have nowhere to go. So they, they felt that if we have a place where there is open every day and they have an up, a place to go, that's a greater chance of more business and dollars not leaving our community, meaning that those dollars would go better, more to our businesses. Next slide.
So in conclusion, these findings demonstrate a strong level of interest from community members and local businesses alike. Based on the results of all the research, we recommend that the library planning committee, or we ask that the library planning committee recommends researching, writing, and submitting the required documents to the Department of Public Instruction. Division of Libraries and Technology requesting an opinion on the feasibility and desirability of establishing a new public library in the village of Cottage Grove. The library planning committee thanks the village board and administration for their time and consideration of needs and wants the residents in Cottage Grove public library in our community. So appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
And this is the last slide. If there are any questions, I'm not sure if, how do you like to do this, John? We're happy to ask any questions of the board or if there's any community members that want to make public comment at this time. I'm not sure how you're doing that.
I think probably we can start with just, probably have the board ask a few questions because it may address questions that others have. We do have, the board did receive a number of written or email feedback. So I'm just saying that now so that I remember to actually to relay that. So I'll, I'll hold on that. But I guess my first question is in regards to this committee's recommendation of, of taking that next step. What does that next step entail? Is that, you know, submitting for evaluation? When, when DPI does that, what, what do they do? I'm, I'm sure that you guys are experts in this because you've been in it, you know, in it for so long and kind of know that. I'm kind of, and, and do you also, assuming a board approves that part tonight, what is kind of the timeline that that would take? And following on to that, what would happen?
Sure. That's a, that's a good question. And DPI requires more information than what we've gathered thus far. And the, the letter that's required to submit to DPI is more of a letter with a bunch of documents attached to it that indicates like a more definite operating budget, funding sources for building a library, creation of a library board, what the plans are for a capital campaign, budget for the library board. And we need to have more information about the specifics from the community on what the library would actually look like, what we would want for our community. So we, we thought that we, when we first started way back a year ago, we knew that ultimately a letter to DPI was required, but we hadn't fully anticipated everything that was required. And after finishing the survey and reviewing the results and looking at the next steps, we were ultimately going to be at, we are asking this evening that the library planning committee be allowed to continue to gather all this information towards that because it, it's more than just writing a letter. If that, that helps to answer your question.
And, and do you guys have an idea of how much effort? Because you've seen the list of the requirements that DPI has. Will you need information, say, from staff, from even our financial advisors, et cetera? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much time more that the committee is going to have to invest in this? Or are they going to need support from staff and, and others to provide all this information? And again, I don't know what the list is, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Sure. And I wish, I, I think that the, that would be the task of the committee then to determine all the steps that are required and how long it would take. And so I would anticipate it being for us to gather all the information, just knowing how long it took to work on this survey, to just determine interest from the community and support from the community to find out what the, what's wanted and needed to, in a library from our residents. I don't know how we would go about figuring that out if it's another survey or what. But I would expect six to twelve more months would be required to get all the information at least.
Okay. And does the committee think that there's going to be a required budget for this? I mean, or is it too early to say? And by I say this, I mean the gathering information.
Right. I don't think that we necessarily require a budget to gather the information. But at some point, there, if a library board is established, that requires a, of funding for. I briefly talked to Attorney Manzi about that and he had indicated a library board requires like a ten-hour week librarian costs. But it's possible it could be more than that. Just because he just briefly looked it over, wasn't in depth.
But I think like Melissa.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Cindy.
I think what, what Melissa said is correct. The next phase in terms of writing this letter is like the next step in this process would continue to be this committee doing that work and that's a volunteer committee, at least on, on our end.
Okay. Yeah, because then if we're forming a board, we need a budget and everything. If you're saying six to twelve months, then we'd be in the, in the budget cycle again. So that's when that particular board could, could look at that and funding that certainly as well, if, if that's how it all kind of thing. And then based again on what you guys have, have spent a lot of time doing and, and talking to experts. If everything were to go right, you know, funding, all that stuff, when would the committee think that you need even consider breaking ground? Or have you not even thought that far ahead?
I wouldn't, that, that is too preemptive to even answer that question. That would, we don't know what we don't know right now. And so we need a little bit more facts and figures to even, even take an attempt at that question. There were times where we, even internally, we tried to ask that question ourselves. And the more that we learned about the letter to DPI, the more we're like, look, it's not even worth it to take an attempt at answering that question yet.
And, and didn't, you guys didn't look at other communities that have gone down this road to see?
We did, but it's, the feedback we got from Dane County and from the South Central Library System was that there, there's a, a method to the process. And so if you, you shouldn't put the cart before the horse. And it was very difficult for us to, to not get ahead of ourselves. And so we really had to temper expectations and say, like, let's just follow the process and see where we go from here. Because it's, it's very easy to have a preconceived notion of what you think might happen. And then, you know, just even through the survey, we, we all had preconceived notions of what we'd see. And, and it came out differently in a lot of cases. And sometimes we, we had validated assumptions. But yeah, to your, to your question around timeline, it's, it's really tough to give you any hard and fast rules.
Okay. No, that's fine. I'm, I'm just, I was curious. Again, all the, the details and the research you guys did, if, if you found a model that was, you could emulate or whatever, and, and that had a timeline associated. So I totally understand that. All right. I have asked at least my initial questions. Are there other board members that have questions?
This is Sarah. Question would be how much, or how much commitment comes with sending this letter to DPI? Are we a hundred percent saying we're going to do this or is it still the investigation of looking into this, I guess? What level of commitment is the village putting in when you send this letter to the DPI?
Well, the, the submission has a lot of the background that is needed for building a library. So like your operating budget, your capital campaign, how much funds are needed, what the library is going to look like. So you're, you're well on your way down the road, so to speak. And DPI just gives an opinion then to your letter about the desirability and feasibility of a library being successful in the community. So the letter is not be all, end all. But it, it gives us a definite path. Does that kind of help?
It does. And I guess, so to follow up then, would it, could we ask the committee to do that work as far as, you know, getting those details that you don't have yet that you would submit as part of the letter? And then we decide if we're ready to send the letter? Does that make sense? It feels like I'd be, it feels like tonight I'd be approving to send a letter, but I don't know what all would be in the letter because we don't know what all of the attachments are. So I'm wondering if, if we could have the committee go and do that and then we approve sending the letter once we have those details.
I, I would say that the ask for tonight is for the committee to, and I'm not, obviously I can't make a motion, right? But just to clarify the ask, right, of tonight is that can the committee continue to do its research in order to be able to put that letter together, right? Like, we're not asking you to write, to say yes to a letter. We're asking for, and again, I'll, I'll defer to Melissa here, but like, the ask is we, we need to do more work before we can even put the letter together. And we would come back to the, to the, to the board and say, hey, here's what we put together. Here's ideally a letter that we can send to DPI. Are you okay with it?
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful.
Other questions, comments from board members?
Hey, this is Paul. I would first say a lot of great work here and, and hats off to this committee. I really appreciate all the efforts that you put into this. Melissa, the one thing that I was going to throw out there, are we at a place now to start, you know, financial mapping in the relation to looking at potentially a five-year or longer performa as it relates to our operating costs, things of that nature? But based off what I'm hearing from you, it's too early to even consider that because you need to better understand what the community wants and the needs are. Is that how I heard it?
Yes. Basically, like, we can give a general idea of the operating costs, but that number can fluctuate based on so many different sources of funding as well. It doesn't all necessarily come out of the village budget and for operational costs and the capital campaign. Like, we could give an idea of what a library would cost to build. But it, it would vary depending on what the inside of the library looked like. If it was a large community meeting space and the library portion with the books and the computers and the program spaces, or if there's a whole bunch of separate meeting rooms. Like, there's all sorts of different variables. So we don't want to put numbers out there when it's just so different. And I think if the library planning committee is allowed to continue the work of gathering the information, we'll have a much better idea for our next budget for next year, for the 2022 cycle.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the only other question that I would have, it's just out of flat curiosity and only for that reason. I know we approved the questions of the survey as a board, but was this an external firm that did the survey or was this an internal, the committee, like a survey monkey?
The survey monkey was the ultimate platform, but the committee came up with all the questions and had them reviewed by outside sources, just at a passing glance, not paid for at all. So, so yeah, the, the committee members did a really great job.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members, comments?
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions if I can, please. I, I want to thank the committee for their hard work. We've obviously put a lot of time and effort into this and I applaud you for that. On page six, about usage, was that strictly village residents? Because the comment was made as Cottage Grove residents. I'm just wondering if that's town and village, our community, or is that strictly village numbers?
Are you talking about the bookmobile?
Yeah, well, the bookmobile and then visiting of other libraries in particular, really.
Sure. So the, Dane County Library Services doesn't distinguish between, it's only a Cottage Grove address. So we couldn't tease apart a village versus town for that. So it's just Cottage Grove.
Okay, all right. And then appendices was mentioned a couple of times in the presentation. Where is the appendices on this? I, I don't see that anywhere in any of the presentation.
It's not in the presentation. It's in, it's the number three item under the presentation, item six.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Another question, part of the survey questions. Why was there not any questions asked about financing and what it would be worth to a average citizen's household and the value that library would provide to them?
Because that's not what the library planning committee was tasked with. We were just tasked with finding if there was support in our community for building a library. So that's what the survey focused on. The next steps would determine that part of it. I mean, I guess that could be, that could be the next steps that the library planning committee looks into if, if you wanted. I mean, because it would be hard to come up with what a library, what, what size of a library, what things we want in a library at this point if we didn't determine that residents wanted to have a library here in the first place.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I, I just wonder if some folks, if they knew it was going to cost them an extra $500 on their tax bill, if they would have an opinion that's different than we'd love to have a library if it's not costing me anything.
And some of the, no, and, and some of the comments that were, that we did receive indicated as much as well that, that they would like a library here but don't want it to cost too much on their taxes. Or there were comments that people didn't want their taxes raised. And I think those are helpful comments as we go forward so that we can keep that in mind for funding to, I mean, I don't necessarily want my taxes to be increased either. However, the full scope of it, we need to provide resources for our residents, for our community. And that helps to increase the amount of businesses that come to our community that helps to offset our taxes as well. So it's not all about, we're just building this library for who's here. We're building this to help our community as a whole and bring in other amenities and businesses.
So Melissa, you mentioned already that, that's kind of the next step is to figure out the type of amenities and, and that this library would be. So that would really be setting up for all the information that needs to go to DPI because they do need that type of information. If, am I understanding that correctly or am I off base? Because that's what I thought I heard. So it would be like this next piece is kind of figure that out. Because that's what I thought I heard. So it would be like this next piece is kind of figure that out. And then you can start figuring out what the what kind of the impact would be to any resident or any business or, you know, what amenities would be offered, what what those things would be. Because you now have that research and you kind of package that up. And then you can, someone can say, okay, we can even reach out to ours and say, okay, why don't you plug that into our X-year plan and see what that looks like now that we have some better numbers to to work from? Correct or no?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Just to add to to, I think, I'll kind of tie John and Troy's questions together. Very early on, I can admit myself, like, I wanted to get to the tax question, right? Like, I was like, let's just talk about the money, you know, because let's see if somebody's interested in it. And and I can, I distinctly remember, it's almost 12 months ago, but I can't really remember this detail. But like, it's like, you have to find out, because we heard this from Dane County and South Central. And then I distinctly remember Ann and Melissa telling me, you have to find out, is anybody interested in in the services the library can offer? Because you need to know, you need to know what people want before you can go buy it, right? Like, I can't just go to the grocery store and just buy random stuff. I need to know what you want to eat first, right? And that was kind of the analogy that was given to me. And it's like, that makes a ton of sense that like, do people want meeting rooms and books and computers and or what do they want, right? And that was the goal of this survey. And then the next this next iteration is for us to be able to figure out, okay, here's the top five things you want. You know, if it looked like this, would you be okay with it, right? So there's a lot of parts and pieces that we can kind of interchange here to get to that tax question. But we had to find out first if anybody wanted anything to begin with and what and how can we stack rate that first. And so I hope that, Troy, I hope that kind of gets to your question, but that's kind of was the thought process that the committee went through.
It does. Go ahead, Sam.
I just, I wanted to reiterate too that, I mean, yeah, back, you know, a year ago, when we first started kind of investigating this, you know, a couple of numbers did jump out to us. And one is like a local operating budgets around 500,000. And then what we already pay in Dean County taxes, what the residents already pay is, you know, 274,000 of that is what we already pay to use the bookmobile or other Dean County services. So we do know those numbers. And then like, you know, like Dave said, like, it's the cost of building are just, it's so variable. Do you want a one-story? Do you want a two-story? Do you want, you know, children's areas and meeting rooms and all of that? And so I think the committee would be excited to kind of pursue that kind of research, you know, in the next year.
No, and and that does help answer the question quite a bit. You go and buy a car, what do you want for options? So so that that part of it makes sense. The the half a million dollar operating expense that equates to about $200 per household in the village. I did some research. I didn't have a lot of time today. Village of McFarland, their budget for 2021 was $904,000 for operating budget. 2020, I'm sorry, 2020 was, it was 904,000. 2021 is $944,000. So that's going to equate to about $375 per household. I'm just, I'm just raising concerns of some folks that I've talked to of the cost of library. And and I think if someone wanted to donate the library, build it and pay for operating expenses for 20 years, I think that'd be awesome. And and there was also a comment made about businesses in support of this and and stuff. I guess the one one thing I would say, and I've only been on village board for five years, but I've never heard anybody come to our village board and say, I'm not going to build my business here because you don't have a library.
And again, yeah, thanks, Troy. I think that's what the committee is saying is through this process that they're asking to go next is just to figure that out. What are those operating expenses based on all the items that folks want? Because that determines staffing. Then there's DPI does have some requirement, minimum requirements. So you got to factor those in. Then you got to factor in, okay, are you adding a community room or not? And how much space and how many meeting rooms to what Melissa said before? I think then then we can turn loose, you know, our financial folks to kind of give us what that looks like in the future for taxpayers and that will all package together, I think, for this board to evaluate before submitting, I think is what Sarah said. That's what I, at least what I'm hearing so far. I do have some feedback. And again, I'm doing this because I don't want to forget that the board did receive for and against for this. And I just want to briefly mention those that we did receive the email at least as of five o'clock this evening. Abigail Eddington, who is on Connie Street, indicated that she is in support of this, of the library, and does go through a nice iteration of of why she supports that. We had a email from Peter Dahl, who is a village resident on Stony Hill. He voiced his concern about just the costs and competing resources and other considerations because of the, this is a fairly large item in any budget for any community. So he was voicing his concern over balancing all that. Brittany from Dolphin Swim Academy indicated her support for the library. And then Mary Kay Oll had indicated, been in the village for over 25 years. And again, supportive of of these plans. So those are the ones I can see right now. We had, obviously, and Jeremy spoke too as well. So just wanted to relay those. Let's make sure I don't have any others that were sneaking in here. Oh, yes, I did a couple more. David Crockett, I'm not sure if he's a village resident or not, just said no library needed. And then Andrew Cardinal, who is a village resident, again, said not support of a library. So those are the ones that the board did receive regarding this as well. So I just want to make sure I cover that. Think we can take a pause and see if anybody else from the community has any thoughts on this again, stating where you're located and let me hear comments to no more than three minutes based on what you've heard so far. So I'll pause and allow anyone to jump in.
Yeah, this is Peter Dahl, 901 Stony Hill Lane. And I did have a question. So I appreciate all the work that was done. It's very, very comprehensive. The one question I had was, is there any reason? I know there was talk about varying the costs very significantly depending on what's included, both in terms of the capital cost to build and then the ongoing operating expenses. But the question I have is, is there a reason why we didn't put a range or at least try to tease out in this survey, which was a golden opportunity to get community feedback in terms of, you know, what is the sensitivity in terms of what we're willing to to absorb in terms of increases in 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 cost for households? Obviously, the results don't surprise me. Of course, everybody wants a library. Who wouldn't, right? But again, when it comes time to making a commitment of precious resources, is there a reason why we didn't tease that out? Because now we're we're kind of past that survey and and we don't have that critical piece of information of of the willingness to cover costs and then the impact on the various alternatives in terms of applying resources.
Melissa, you want to take that one?
Sure. Again, again, our committee was not tasked with finding out the level of financial support. It was just determining if people in our community were interested in supporting a library. I guess that was, that we felt it was talked about, it was discussed in our committee to some extent. But ultimately, when you're starting at nothing, at zero, and you don't know how the community feels about a library and with there being so many variables to a library, randomly coming up with numbers just wouldn't, I don't think it would have been very accurate. I mean, we could have, we could have come up with, are you interested in putting, having the village borrow $5 million or $10 million? But it wouldn't have meant anything because we have no idea what's needed at this point. And a lot depends on a capital campaign, how much is raised as well. So there is just too many variables for this one small survey that we started with. And I think it might have, for me anyway, it was definitely my first survey to come up with questions and try to figure out how to word them so that it was being as level as possible to make sure we got accurate results. So it is something that we are interested in. I would like to know more about the financial part of it to determine how much it's going to cost, how much would have to be raised before residents felt comfortable with a library, supporting a library financially. But at this point, this past year, that's not what our committee was really tasked with. So the next steps, I think that would be a part of it. And the initially, too, we started before COVID. And we had discussed doing focus groups or in-person meetings, going to civic groups to their meetings to let everybody know that we were, what we were doing so that we could actually meet with people face to face. And survey wasn't our first option, but it ended up being a survey because of the COVID-19 restrictions as well.
Thank you, Melissa. I guess one quick question if I could is, is there any reason why major capital investments for this community wasn't included in terms of trying to get feedback from residents on priority, whether it's a community center, community pool, you know, you know, additional park resources and and facilities? Is there any reason why we didn't put something there to kind of rank and file where that falls in major commitments for the community?
That's not what our committee was tasked with. So I I guess I can't really answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I guess maybe an answer to that question is we had an opportunity for people to write comments in the survey. And there were quite a few that were very enthusiastic about donating their time and money to this effort, I guess.
So Melissa and the committee, so as I understand it, again, we need to do some more legwork as it relates to the financial piece. Do I understand that once we have that established, you know, and we have a better understanding and have some level of confidence in the numbers, will we be circling back to our village regarding that level of support in relation to the financial, financial piece?
Yeah, Paul, I would say that one thing, and and I could admit even myself, like, I'm, it's it's just now recently becoming clear to me that we have a really good, solid base to start with of what people are interested in, right? So now we can plant the flag and say, okay, here's the top five things you're interested in. And we could start to move pieces around on the board and, you know, sketch out what, you know, rough costs. And I can't emphasize enough, like, rough, right? You know, and we got a lot of feedback from Dane County and South Central, like, told us what, you know, you know, the really, I would have assumed that computer labs were a thing, right? Like, like, you go to Manona, you go to a lot of other libraries, like, computer labs are a thing. And both Dane County and South Central, like, it's a waste of money. Do not do that, right? And the survey results kind of put, if I, I'd have to go back and look. But, I mean, like, that's just, I would think that'd be something you'd want. And they're like, no, don't do that. So now we know that we can, how to sketch some things out and put some stuff together and think of raw square footage. But again, it's gonna be rough, but it's like, you know, I'm thinking, and this is my own thought, that there might be another survey in mind here to kind of like Peter and Troy and John's questions. Like, like, again, I can't speak for the committee, but like, it makes a lot of sense that when, you know, we might have to go back to the committee, to the community and say, okay, here, we know a little bit more, we're a little bit smarter. You know, and then to get to that, because ultimately, there is that tax question, right? But I think we're get, we're, we are a lot smarter than we were 12 months ago, but there's still a lot we don't know.
Very helpful. Thank you, David.
John, I just have a couple comments and suggestions, if I may.
Sure, Matt.
Thanks for the presentation, everybody. Appreciate it. In going through the materials, one of the funding sources that I noticed wasn't included in one of the attachments was an impact fee, which is something that some communities have used to help provide funding for construction of a of a library. So that's something to research as you guys continue. When you're digging into cost, please look at more than just the building cost. There'll be other site costs like water and sewer main, laterals, as well as other public infrastructure that will need to be, you know, part of the, part of the overall considerations. I did reach out to our financial advisor and they would be willing to help out once figures are better known and timelines are better known. They can do that at no additional cost as part of our normal update to our financial management plan. So I think that's good news. And then a type of a question in a future survey, maybe listing out in, say, $100 increments for tax impact and 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 ask, you know, what is the highest threshold that a resident would be willing to absorb for this? That way, you would have an idea as what the top end is for most people. And then if the end impact after doing all the study is higher than that, then, you know, then I think you have an answer. And if it's lower, then I think you have some good feedback as well. So that's all I have. Thanks, John.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Any other public comments? Otherwise, we will move on to next items.
Do we need a motion to, for the committee to continue?
Actually, I was gonna, you're right, Sarah. It's later, but I was gonna move it if no one objects, if there's no other public comments than the ones we've heard. So what I'd like to do, if if the board is okay with this, since we do have the committee still on the phone, is to move up to the library committee's update, which includes discussing Consider a Library Planning Committee recommendation to the next item. So following this presentation unless somebody objects. All right, Melissa, any, other than you guys working really hard to get this presentation ready at the last committee meeting, any other items that you need to highlight there?
No, that was all that we had, just were finalizing the last pieces of the report and presentation. I did just want to note that I hope that everyone can see how much work went into this past year on the Library Planning Committee from our dedicated members. And I wanted to thank them for all of their hard work over the past year. They've really done a wonderful job and you can tell how much they care about our community and are invested in this project. So thank you to them because without that, we wouldn't be where we're at. So. And if you want, I can go over my memo then.
Can I ask just one more quick question on the survey? Sorry, it just came to me. Because I know we've been talking about getting other documents translated. Do you have a sense of how many people took the survey in Spanish?
Four.
Four, okay. Thank you.
All right. And real quick, I would also like to thank the committee, Melissa, for for all their hard work because it clearly was a lot of effort here to put all this together. So thank you from from me personally, and I sincerely think that the board would also concur with me on that. With that, Melissa, then would you go through your memo, please?
Yes. So in the packet, there's a memo that I prepared that basically briefly reviews what you just heard in the presentation. So I just wanted to note a couple of other things, such as the village board's list of priorities. The library is number four. Economic development is our number one priority. A library goes along with economic development. And many of the comments we received from the survey and this evening, we heard that libraries are a resource and bring communities together. Many believe that it's a much-needed resource that has long been lacking in our community. A library can bring more businesses, especially along the Cottage Grove corridor as the, the, there's land, the friends own the land for the library next to Glacial Drumlin School. If if residents can stay in our village, then they're more likely to go to our businesses rather than stop at a grocery store in Madison. If, if residents can stay in our village, then they're more likely to go to our businesses rather than stop at a grocery store in Madison or a gas station in some prairie or a coffee shop in Manona. And because residents know that they have a place where they can go for free in our community. The number two village board priority is inclusivity and equity. A library goes along with this priority and that it provides free and equal access to all. Anyone can access the books, audiobooks, videos, periodicals, magazines, computers and programming without having to worry about costs. You can meet friends without feeling obligated to buy something while you're there. And a person that works from home can meet their clients at the library for free, not having to worry about renting a space. A library is a space for all ages and gives our children a safe place to go in our community that they don't currently have. Our number three priority is sustainability and climate change. Having residents leave our community to use other communities libraries increases the amount of vehicles on our street, increasing the pollution. Additionally, residents can walk or bike to a local library, decreasing the amount of cars on streets and increasing the fitness of our residents. And our number five priority is fiscal responsibility. Part of fiscal responsibility is looking at smart investment opportunities. Having over $273,000 leaving the village to support other communities libraries isn't really the best use of those funds. When it could stay here and help our community and our residents. Think investing in our community is part of fiscal responsibility, responsibility because the rewards are worth the investment in our people. And I really appreciated everybody's comments on the survey, even those that raise concerns about their taxes being raised. I think it's very helpful to have that feedback to know where to go as we continue. And so I guess I would just lastly ask that the village board to allow the library planning committee to continue our work in gathering the information required to continue to know, reach out to and understand the wants and needs of our residents and to see how the library can help support that. So allowing us to continue to gather the information needed for DPI will allow us to understand our community's wants and needs then.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. At this point, then, I'd like to make a motion then for us to allow the library planning committee to take their their recommendations and move that forward so we can get some of these questions that were brought up, addressed. And then certainly get, come back before the board when we do have that packet and everything available. So we can understand, you know, what we take, what the next steps are.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion second then. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Part of discussion, yes.
I, I, I think part of this is, is really the financial impact, not only for a facility. We know what kind of car we want. Those questions have been answered, it sounds like. What we really need to know is what it's going to cost our citizens and get their input as to what their tolerance is for that. And that's, that, that, not just for the facility, but as the operating budget as well. I think that's very important that we figure that out sooner than later. Because I hate to see you go through a lot more work and then find out that it's just not in the, in the ballpark, or it is in the ballpark for folks to be able to stomach.
Yep, I think that's what the committee is going to be tackling as part of this, certainly Troy. So any other discussion items? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone from the OPC. We will then move on to new business. And that is discussing, consider general engineering contract renewal. So there is a memo and everything in the packet related to this. I don't know, Matt, if you want to cover this or?
Sure. And Larry may have a comment or two as well. Last, last year was the first, our first year with general engineering as our, providing our building inspection services. And we entered into just a one-year contract with them to see how things go and then renew and go from there. This proposed agreement would be an indefinite time, time period with, with a severance time period built in there. I believe it was 30 days notice. And legal has reviewed it and provided some comments back to general engineering. And maybe Larry could touch base on some of those, but we, we didn't hear back from general engineering in time to get the agreement ready. So I think we'll need to ultimately table this tonight, but Larry can kind of jump in and provide what the changes are that we were asking for. I don't think there's anything that's a, a big deal. That will be a hang up, but.
Yeah, there, there, there were a few, a few minor changes we saw, we, we saw it in this. You know, looking at this long-term, we, we want to make sure that, we want to make sure that if there were any conflicts or anything associated with it, that the village would be in the best position it could be in to move forward with those. But the, the big, the big change we requested is in the way that fees would be retained by general engineering if the contract was ever terminated. Basically, as the contract's written now, they keep whatever fees they've collected on projects where they've begun any work. And what we're asking for is that they keep a proportionate share of those fees based on how much work they've completed. And that's largely, that's nothing against GE. It's just that some of the fees that are collected are, get up into the six-figure range and you know, the, if, if we were to, for, for any reason, either side was to terminate this contract in the early end of, let's say, a number of projects that have really large fees. You know, we don't want to be left with having to pay someone else to come in and do those services after they're gone. So it's just really obvious sort of fair, fairness changes that we're talking about. You certainly can't pay for the same service twice. We just need to figure out a way to, to write that up that's agreeable to both sides.
And Matt, i- if I can ask a question. The 30 days, is, is that for both sides, both us and them as far as a, a clause?
Yes, I think it's 90 days and yes, it is for both.
Okay.
When they came and presented to the board a month or two ago as well, and that I think will continue to be part of the normal routine with them as well as any of our vendors. So at this point then, if we don't have an agreement, we do, we know where we're at, but I'd like to make a motion then to table this.
A second.
Second.
All right, motion second. Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Item two then, or item B, sorry, of new business is discussing, consider developers agreement for Cottage Grove Commons Phase Two. Larry, you're on the hook, I think, for this one.
Right. And first let me apologize for the timing of receiving the materials. One of the things I'm the most proud of about working with this community is that staff are more than willing to bend over backwards to try to make things happen and move things forward. And the service level that people get is off the charts. And I like being part of that. But sometimes what that means is rather than saying to someone, sorry, you're going to have to wait till next month because we weren't done in time, we, we instead put, put the question to the board. You know, if, if there were board members who were uncomfortable with approving a, an agreement that the details of which were only just recently received, you, you know, you have the option of tabling that. The reason why we don't pull it off your agenda and not leave you with the choice of whether to do that is because it's your prerogative. But just to, just to keep that in mind, you know, sometimes things are going to come in at the last minute and it's certainly reasonable for someone to be uncomfortable moving forward. But on this particular project, what I can tell you is the reason why we're working so hard to get it done quickly is because there's actually a developer that's chomping at the bit and has been wonderful to work with and setting up this agreement. But quite frankly, it's a, there's a lot to it. And but, but most importantly, what I would report to you tonight is that there really are no changes to what we agreed, what we would be agreeing to in this, in this document as compared to what you approved or gave us the thumbs up to move forward with in, with this particular development. All of the, the terms are the same. We were kind of working out some details on phasing and things in the last minute, but but, but this project is, is, is this agreement is precisely what, you know, I, I almost, I struggle to determine whether to put something down as new business or old business. I would say this is new business, but it's, 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 it's an old approval. It's your second time around. We've put into words what you basically approved before. So that's where we are with this one.
Any questions from the board for Larry on this? And again, this is phase two. Phase one is well on its way to being finished.
I'll make a motion to approve the developer agreement for Cottage Grove Commons, Commons Phase Two.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, now discussion part. Please, Heidi.
I was wondering the crosswalk that we discussed across Main Street. At what point will that be installed? Is it just at the completion of the project or is is that requirement laid out here or is that?
It, it's included as a required, one of the required defined public improvements in the project. The, 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 the best way I can answer you as to when that gets done is that the incentive, the pay go, the large bulk of the, the incentive here, the 4.5 million doesn't begin to get paid out until all improvements are done, including this one. So it's, it's included in the list of things that are absolute priority for the developer.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? All right, having heard none, we have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Move on then to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. We already had the library planning committee covered. So thank you, guys. Next up then would be the ad hoc sustainability committee. Heidi, anyone want to cover this one?
Sure. Thanks, John. So we met on the eighth and we had a presentation from Kathy comes from the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change about initiatives at the county level and ways that we might be able to learn from some of the things they've done, leverage some of the relationships that they've built and work with other communities throughout the county. And we also had guest County Executive Joe Parisi there and he talked about some of the projects in depth that they've been doing around the county. And so we had an opportunity to have some question answer sessions with them. So it was interesting to learn more about what they're doing at the county level. That really took up most of the time at the committee. We pushed discussing the solar zoning ordinance to the next meeting when we could dig into that a little deeper. We're also going to continue to explore options for solar, both the smaller scale, like the municipal services building project that we've been throwing around to kind of get a grip on what that would look like. And then maybe future bigger options around community hosted solar, working with an aligned energy program. So that's kind of ongoing information and also keeping up to date with grant opportunities at the state level. So our next meeting is January 12th. Unless you had anything to add, John?
The only thing I had to add was I put Mr. Parisi on, on the spot regarding the bike path because we, as the board knows, we're committed to doing that next year in our capital budget. And I have received initial response and I asked a more specific question of the individual that got back to me. As soon as I get that, I will forward it to the board. But essentially it is, there's still some sticking points between the village and Madison and there's a few players involved in those sticking points. So I went back to this planner and asked, you know, okay, based on his expertise, when do you think this will all get kind of sorted out? So I was waiting for that before I sent those, those details off to this board. So that you all have it too. So that was the only other item that was discussed again. The bike path being something that we're all interested. It is a sustainability piece because if people are biking, they're not driving. So that's a good thing. So thanks, Heidi. Next up then is plan commission. I'll, I'll get us started here. Melissa certainly can chime in too if I missed something or others. So the plan commission, we had a public hearing on just a general development plan for Kevin McCathery's 38-unit multifamily residence development located in four lots on the boundary of Court Crossing, County BB and Sandpiper. Again, that's part of a UD so that it's the first kind of first initial steps in actually getting something to the board approved. So, but that was, that was approved, approved by the plan commission. Then there was just the overall, a general development plan after that, that again was approved. And then as part of that, there's a plat that was submitted. So that was the really the, the bulk of the plan commission was, was centered around that particular general development plan for Kevin McCathery's property there. Aaron, Melissa, Matt, anything I missed?
I think that was it. And the agenda items we have here tonight too are related to that.
Correct. So I guess we have, I think we have Kevin on the line. Kevin Metcalf, sorry. There you are. So Kevin, do you want to kind of share with us, you know, your vision? Kind of do the same spiel you did with the plan commission, I guess, and, and for the, for this board. And then, you know, staff will follow on to that. And then and then we'll get any comments and questions from the board.
That sounds good, John. Thank you. Dwayne, can you pull up the presentation?
Can everybody see my screen?
Okay, good. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Metcalf. I'm part of the development group that's owned this property for about over fif, over 15 years. We did the development of the duplexes that are to the north of this property. Over the course of that time, thought maybe there was an opportunity to develop this property for a commercial use. And so we picked that up from John DeWitt and Bruce Harms, like I said, about 15 years ago. Did substantial marketing of the property, got full approvals through the planning and village board regarding the development here. And then basically with, at this point, zero interest of commercial traffic. We've kind of been sitting on this land with very little movement in terms of interest. We've had a couple proposals, one of which was a Casey's gas station that was, was not well received in terms of the neighborhood interest. And so I think it made it through planning, but ultimately failed the board. We actually, the moving out development that it's being approved down on Hamburg's land was the other piece that we were going to put here. We were their primary choice, but unfortunately, due to some of the covenants and restrictions that I signed when I bought this property, that I would not compete against the developers that own the apartments there, which is John, John DeWitt and Bruce Harms. So we were kind of stuck here trying to draw out straws to find out what the best option for doing something on this property due to the fact that the commercial traffic is, is zero. We ended up going back to the drawing board and Dwayne, you can click to the next slide. I went through a, a number of renditions of how to move this property for an owner occupied use. So commercial, not commercial, but condominiums was something that the developers that I bought the land from would approve, as long as we would not allow them to be rentals. So we've gone through a number of different plans. So we've gone through a number of, uh, different plans. We've had, you know, upwards of forty, uh, forty plus units, uh, on this property. At the end of the day, just due to the topography and, uh, how this, uh, lays out, we felt best, uh, to drop that unit countdown and we ended up with a total of thirty-eight condominium units. They're clustered in, uh, mostly four unit, um, uh, condos with the exception of the bookends on that south side, our three unit condos. Um, so we felt, uh, two different unit styles would be appropriate. Uh, our main goal was to try to fit kind of a, uh, diversification really of what's available in Cottage Grove right now, uh, in terms of pricing of housing. So we're, uh, as low as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for some of the, uh, townhouse style units that we've got there and up to three hundred and fifty, uh, thousand for the flats that are, uh, occupied in the center. So we have two, two different u- um, unit styles. I guess you could say we actually have three unit styles due to the fact that the condominiums have center units that, you know, are, um, have less windows obviously. So that's kind of a third, uh, third unit type that we have. Um, so we're really excited about the project. We think, uh, it's going to fit well in Cottage Grove. We had our neighborhood meeting, uh, that was very well received. Um, Aaron and a number of other, um, uh, either committee members or people from the, uh, the board, uh, were on that call. And, um, um, was really happy with the, the results. Um, people were excited to see some residential movement here. Uh, we talked a little bit about how we would fit into the neighborhood that, uh, it's going to be a residential style with, um, you know, high quality building materials and we want to be just a fabric of the community, um, and that neighborhood. And, and so our intent was to try to just blend in with the other residential units there. So you can skip to the next slide, Dwayne. So this is, uh, uh, an elevation that we put together of what would be the flats. Uh, so you see the, uh, elevation along the proposed road, uh, that which is the bottom drawing. That would be what would be orientated towards the street. Uh, we have the, the front doors, uh, that are, uh, on these units would be orientated, uh, with the sidewalks going to the street like a, um, a normal residential house. Uh, the elevation on the top would be, um, the, the driveway. Uh, you can see here that we've got the, the pitch roofs, asphalt roofs, um, more of a residential style, uh, masonry base. Uh, each unit would be, uh, having its own entry and its own two car garage. So each four unit, um, is an independent unit. There's no common, uh, element with the exception of the driveways entering into the space. Uh, go ahead, next slide, Dwayne. This is just a interior layout. Um, Dwayne, is this the latest one or is this, I guess it really doesn't matter. We've, we've been toying around with these layouts a little bit, uh, but mainly trying to get the masters on the first floor. Um, uh, enlarging the living rooms, um, having kind of a secondary space on the, the upstairs level, uh, along with the, the bedrooms. Uh, talked a little bit about it, planning commission, uh, using the, uh, services from the village. Like where would we, would we do trash and things like that? Where would we have storage? So, so there were some questions that came out of that. What are our mailboxes look like? We're still working on some of those details, but, um, took some of those questions back. We may, uh, end up putting a, uh, basement, uh, a small basement underneath these units for additional storage. The intent of these units would be people that perhaps are downsizing, um, uh, retirees that want to stay in the neighborhood, but maybe want to have the, um, opportunity of not having to mow their lawn, uh, every week. So cleaning their driveways off the stone. So that was kind of the intent of these. These would be, um, uh, three bedroom units. And again, with the master on the first floor, um, with the, with the concept that we would be, um, not age restricted by any means, but, um, just looking at maybe people that are downsizing and or retirees. Go ahead to the next slide. And this is our townhouse style. So these are kind of the bookends of the, of development. These are what, this is what's going to be facing Court Crossing. This is what's going to be facing Sandpiper. It works out really well, in my opinion, uh, due to the fact that the elevation change, we're required to slope, uh, this lot from the southern property line to the northern property line. That kind of competes with the, uh, roads, Court Crossing and Sandpiper. If you're ever on those, they actually are, you know, rising in elevation as you go north. And so, um, with our slope actually having to go, uh, downward to the north, we ended up, um, creating quite a bit of a, an elevation difference between the roads and the northern property line. So to make up some of that, uh, we ended up, uh, turning our townhouses on their side and facing the, the street, which I think, um, is, is, creates a good presence. That's where your, uh, your front doors would be. But, um, along the backside, you can see on that lower elevation, we made up some of that elevation change so that, uh, when you drive into the development and drive into your driveway, then you would have a fully exposed, uh, uh, garage area. You will also on the front, I don't know if it shows it on here, but the, that lower level, that's part of the garage. We also have a, a, a bonus room down there and that would actually have a window and be, um, have a, uh, view to the outside, which is kind of nice. Uh, here again too, we've got, uh, asphalt shingled roofs, um, masonry material on the base and more of a residential feel to kind of blend in with the neighborhood. For the next one. Uh, again, unit styles, um, and, uh, this is right now, as we mentioned, uh, or John mentioned earlier, this is the GDP general development plan and, uh, a preliminary plat. So, um, a lot more of this information will be coming to you in terms of the details. So, but we did want to give you some, um, stuff to look at today, which is the interior units of these townhouses. Uh, again, you drive in, in the lower level. Uh, this is an older, this is, we have an up revised plan, but, uh, there is that bonus room that's down at the bottom. That's not just for mechanicals, but actually would be for an office. You have then the steps that go up into your living quarters. Uh, and, um, and then additionally for your living room, dining room and kitchen, and another set of steps that would take you up to your, uh, upper, uh, living quarters, where you'd be, uh, the two bedrooms with en suites. Uh, looking at the, uh, area, uh, for, um, what's selling? You have the existing, uh, kind of the development that's going on out by the, um, by the culvers. And it seems like there's a high demand for this type of product type as well as this price point. We feel like, uh, we're hitting a really good sweet spot in terms of, um, uh, what's available currently, uh, in Cottage Grove and, and what we can offer, uh, with these condominiums at a price point that I think people are, are interested in doing, um, purchasing. There were a couple of comments, uh, about just, uh, um, uh, the, uh, what's, what's our market? I talked a little bit about the flats. In this particular case, uh, most likely these townhomes, uh, would be something that's a, uh, either young professional, uh, single, um, first time home buyers is also the other market for this. Uh, you know, unlikely to do much in terms of, um, uh, the school district or, or, you know, families, although they certainly, there's opportunities there with the amount of bedrooms. But, um, um, as condos typically, that was one concern that what's the impact on the overall school? Um, but as condos, they're available for families, but most likely our targets will be, uh, young professionals, first time home buyers and then, uh, and retirees, empty nesters. And I think the next slide is maybe just our, our, uh, yeah, we just. Landscaping, sorry guys. Uh, we, we owe a few more points, I think a couple more trees if I'm not mistaken, but, uh, uh, heavily landscaped. Uh, there's a requirement for obviously our northern buffer line, that's that, uh, uh, the swale area, uh, between us and the duplexes. So that area is, you know, heavily landscaped. We'll make sure that we're, uh, within the bounded lines to make sure that the, that doesn't impede any, uh, water flow that, um, which is the intent of that swale back there. Uh, but heavily landscaped throughout the property, uh, islands in between the garages, uh, along the street fronts, uh, and along the Cottage Grove corridor. Uh, pretty proud of, you know, we're going to create as much green space as possible and, and make it as lively as possible with, uh, uh, a good thorough designed, uh, landscaping plan. And, I think that's fine. And I think this is just our overall schedule. As I mentioned to you before, we had a really good neighborhood meeting. Um, very happy about the reception that we had there. Yeah, as John mentioned, we went through the planning commission, uh, to get our preliminary approval of approval for the GDP as well as the, uh, preliminary plat. Uh, with an approval, uh, this evening, we would, uh, then move on to the PIP, uh, for the precise implementation plan and the final plat approval, which would go back to the, uh, planning commission, um, and then ultimately come back to you on the board. Appreciate your consideration.
All right, thanks Kevin. Um, we turn it over to Aaron. Aaron had some, um, initial comments, which were also part of the approval of the plan commission. And, uh, then we'll follow it on with Kevin from NSA.
Yeah, thanks John. I don't have a ton of comments. Generally the, the project was, uh, really well done. Um, may recall that until earlier this year, the comp plan required, uh, commercial, at least along the frontage or mixed use. Um, along the Cottage Grove Road frontage, we did introduce text into the plan with this last amendment cycle during the summer or fall. Um, that does give the plan commission board some discretion to waive that requirement for commercials. So assuming, um, you're open to doing that, uh, the plan would be consistent with the comp plan with a very minor exception Kevin mentioned about the landscaping and, um, have already corresponded with their landscape architects since the plan commission. It sounds like they're, they're working on that. So there are two separate agenda items. The first, the general development plan and the second is the plat. Um, as far as the, uh, general development plan, um, my comments are recommending approval, uh, with conditions. My conditions are generally just recording some of the, um, uh, factors related to density and lot coverage that are, uh, different than what our densest residential district would be. Um, they're seeking this as a planned unit development to allow a little bit higher density than that MR twelve would allow. But given the location on Cottage Grove Road, I don't think you'd want the project that's any less dense than this. Um, so those are, generally don't have an issue with any of those exceptions that are being requested. And then, uh, the second condition was again, the hundred and sixteen landscaping points. Um, so a large deciduous tree is seventy-five points and evergreen, large evergreen is forty. So it's, you know, another couple of trees in, in that entire length of block that would, um, accomplish that condition. And then as far as the plat, um, again, just to note that through the PUD, there would be an exception for the width of the right of way on the proposed road running east west through the site. Um, the subdivision ordinance has a minimum of sixty-six feet, but, um, given the very limited nature of this proposed road, it's only really, really going to be used by the residents within this development. Um, we're okay with the sixty foot width. The actual width of the pavement, pavement is within our, um, regulation, so that's not an issue. Um, I think Kevin had a few engineering comments as well.
Thanks Aaron. Kevin?
Thanks Aaron, thanks John. Yeah, um, uh, similar to Aaron, I was recommending approval of both the plat and, uh, uh, general development plan. Some of the comments I had, um, basically, um, starting with the plat, um, it was one on was just a note comment, um, for access. Um, basically just to add a, adding, um, lot ten, uh, to have no access off their, their access is planned internally and that's where the driveway is off the new road and not off of, uh, any of the existing roadways. And then basically the only other real comment that I had was they were requesting on the east side of this development, um, along Sandpiper, there's an existing stormwater easement that was put in place. I guess, I'm not sure if it's put in place with the plat originally or the CSMs that followed it. But based on the proposed drainage that they're, um, planning and which, um, is working, uh, is showing the work and everything, we would, um, we would agree with them that that could be removed, um, at the appropriate time. So that is something that would be done. It wouldn't be done, it could be done right with the plat process, but it's a separate document, I guess. So we can work with them on that. Um, I don't see any issues with that. So, um, as far as site plan comments, very, in general, very minimal ones. Um, and a lot of these, as Kevin kind of mentioned, will be, um, items that'll be basically addressed in, uh, in the precise plan, um, upcoming and everything. So it's just more some detailed plans with, uh, the intersections, um, just verifying drainage and how things are working, uh, through a couple of those, making sure sidewalks are ADA accessible. Um, to follow up on, uh, Aaron's comment about the street widths. Um, the street to the north is also sixty feet wide, um, as it exists today, um, north of this development. So we, I agreed with Aaron that, uh, of the width a- as well for, for this development. Um, there was a couple of utility comments, um, very minimal in nature that things we'll just review as, as they get closer and finalize some plans regarding some, just verifying service sizes and valve locations. Um, one comment we had on some of their drainage is to try and get is, um, basically the impervious areas to the north. Um, there's a couple lots down to the south that they had draining to the south, um, which would end up sheet flowing kind of over the, um, sidewalks, um, at the corner of Cottage Grove and Sandpiper, that area, basically. So we're, uh, trying to get them and I can tell you that their engineer has reached out to me and is working on that and is basically doing what he can. And we've talked through a couple of things, so I, I don't see that as being any kind of an issue or anything either. Um, as far as overall stormwater comments, basically this site, uh, is served by the, um, regional pond to the east of this. And it has been, it's basically, doesn't have to do infiltration due to the soils. So in general, they just need to get the water, which they have shown, uh, to the swale to the north, like Kevin mentioned. And it'll, it should meet basically, uh, villages standards. So more so just some details on some sizing of storm pipes and things that, uh, Kevin said, like, will be coming with, uh, uh, the PIP submittal as things move forward. Um, the one comment that I didn't have in my review, um, is I think they got their landscape plan, um, later and I just, uh, mentioned, which Kevin had mentioned as well, and his review was just making sure that with the landscaping that they maintain the drainage swale on the north side, uh, and everything. So we'll just make sure that's, that's maintained throughout, um, with the landscaping they propose. Um, but that's basically a general summary, but we recommend approval as well.
All right, thanks Kevin. Um, move on then to questions from board members, comments.
John, I just have one comment, I'm not a board member, but, uh.
Last time I checked, nope.
For, uh, for the developer, Kevin, would you mind sharing, I believe you shared with the plan commission, uh, the expected assessed value for the finished development? It's a rather, uh, substantial project, if you mind sharing that with the board for the record.
Yeah, so, um, as I mentioned, the, uh, the goal in terms of, uh, what we're going after on prices, the two fifty for our townhouse style, uh, the three fifty on the flat, uh, two seventy-nine on the outer units on the townhouses. Um, add it all up is around just over twelve million would be the overall, uh, uh, value in terms of the purchase price of, um, all the units being sold.
Thank you.
Uh, can I, can I ask, um, the new street that's being proposed, is that going to be a condo association street or is that going to be a village street in which the village has to maintain plow and all of the other stuff?
Yeah, so talking with city staff, we had kind of gone on both, both ways, but ultimately it, um, the discussion where we settled was it is a public street. Uh, we named that street, um, on the plat anyway, is, uh, Highland Drive, I think is what it's named, but that's not, that's kind of irrelevant, but, uh, it is a public street.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, this is Sarah. Um, I'm wondering, I didn't see it in your layout, but maybe I dismissed it. Do you have, do these buildings or the units have laundry facility?
Yes.
Okay. And for the ones that you're kind of thinking for the, you know, retirees, empty nesters, is the laundry facility on the main level?
I believe it is, Dwayne.
Okay. I just know that's important for, for folks that don't, you know, up and downstairs with a basket of laundry when, as you get older, can be quite dangerous, so.
Just right there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, board members?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I was wondering about the speed, I guess this is more for staff. The speed limit on Cottage Grove Road, have, would we consider, um, at some point reducing it? If there's, you know, residences right on Cottage Grove Road to twenty-five? Or maybe that's a, a bridge we cross later? I don't know.
I think, I'll, I'll start. I think that may be a bridge we cross later. Um, I know it's twenty-five, not far from here, so, um, I don't think that would be a major, uh, hurdle to overcome. But, you know, we'd want to talk with Kevin's experts and, and take a look at what's actually there and, uh, give it those.
And certainly, the other piece to that would be there's potential development just opposite side of of Cottage Grove Road as well, and then and both sides of this development. So as that develops, I think we would certainly want to have that, you know, slower downs, particularly as hopefully, there's a mix of business in there too, so you might have a little higher traffic volume in certain spots there. So it would make sense to perhaps move that. I don't know if we have to do a traffic study or something like that on that when it goes to that, but certainly, we do need to keep an eye on that. I agree, Heidi.
That's the only question I had. So thanks.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? If not, then is there a motion for consideration in this?
I'd make a motion to approve the proposed general development plan from Kevin Metcalf for a 38-unit multifamily residential development located on lots one through four of CSM number 12454, bounded by Cork Crossing, County Highway BB and Sandpiper Trail, with staff recommendations as presented.
Second.
All right. Thanks, Heidi. Thanks, Troy. We have a first and second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, then we have the next item then, and and this is the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat from Kevin Metcalf for a 38-unit multifamily residential development located on lots one through four, excuse me, of CSM number 12454, bounded by Cork Crossing, 20 Road BB and Sandpiper Trail.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Those were the the biggies from the Plan Commission. We'll move on then to Public Works Committee. And we had a special meeting on December 14th. This was really focused in primarily on the Bus Road and BB reconstruction plan. And the reason is we're getting down to the wire as far as moving this towards completion by next August. So that was that was the discussion there. We also did, the committee also talked a little bit about some improvements to County N, particularly in the new development area with between School Road and and Leimerk. Because that's some of that is currently doesn't have curb and gutters. So staff's working on that. We'll bring that back to Public Works as far as that goes. The committee approved the recommendation from MSA and staff for the reconstruction plan. Larry was kind enough to outline it very detailed on kind of what's transpiring with that. And I don't know, Larry, if you want to go through your memo before I kind of kick it over to Kevin and JJ or any other comments?
That sounds great. Yeah, so the memo that you received last last week is a little longer than we normally have for something like this, but there's there's just a lot going on with this intersection. And I guess we feel it's important that you have the the full scope of of considerations. So big picture, the 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 future of this intersection and this corridor on on BB is to be four-lane and urbanized. We've made some concessions to the district, school district already up on Bus Road to install some temporary improvements and and really based on slowdown and what we expected to see, at least with development, particularly with Shady Grove. We reassessed what was needed here and how long it would be before more would it would before more improvements or or more traffic capacity, if you will, were made available here. And we determine that we're probably quite a ways away from that. You know, you're talking about, we've been throwing out numbers like maybe more than 10 years, maybe 15, depending on how how swiftly some of these potential developments move forward. So the proposal at this point is to is is to not over overbuild. It is really up to the board to decide whether and and to what extent we do build this intersection. We know we have to do something in preparation for the opening of the school this fall or next fall. But, you know, communities take different approaches to this kind of thing. Sometimes they build out the infrastructure to make things more interesting to developers, but as far as what's needed for transportation for the foreseeable future, we think that that the approach that's proposed here is is the way to go.
JJ or Kevin, any other comments? Or do you want to show maybe show the board at least a view of what this is going to look like, perhaps? It's in the packet, but.
Yeah, I can. Kevin, how about you work on pulling up your exhibit and I'll just briefly mention that like Larry alluded to, a lot goes into this. There's been a lot of discussions. Part of that is Dane County's plan for BB as well. And Kevin's done a lot of work with with their staff over there. And essentially, we're not just going to do this intersection and and the way we're recommending you guys move forward with it, but also the little piece that would be left kind of off of the plan between where we left off at in front of GDS and then to where this picks up. Essentially, we will be planning to repave that stretch too, so there's not a section of old road left in there. And then Dane County has already initially talked with Kevin and they'd be picking up that cost as a part of them doing all of BB, whether it is immediately reimbursed or not, I think we still got to work out those details. But essentially, in the next, I believe she said, two years at the latest, they want to repave the stretch of BB all the way to Madison. So they'd be thrilled if we took care of that little piece too while we're doing this.
My understanding on that, JJ, just so you know, was that they would reimburse for that section sooner, obviously, like it kind of immediately for that section between the east east leg of ours and and where they ended up from the work on Damascus, I guess, that gap area there, so that when the county came through, maybe the following year, they just wouldn't even have to get quite to Bus Road. They would just stop wherever our west improvements were. So that was my understanding when we talked with Pam.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I think Larry laid it out perfectly, just given the a lot that's happened in the past year. And then Kevin's team took a really close look and and really, we we just don't need it for for the traffic at this time. And indications are too, that if it's 10-plus years, Dane County may not necessarily be opposed to sharing any costs when we do need that four-lane full urbanization as long as, you know, it kind of indicated if it come, if it come back in a year or two, that's going to look a little fishy. But I mean, if it's five, 10, 15 years out, we'll most likely have a partner in Dane County for that too.
The one thing I could add to this is, and Larry can jump in to add some any specifics, but in general, basically, what this is planned to be is still a signalized intersection with basically turn lanes added to it is in general what it is. And we've altered it so that Larry's team has reached out to Shady Grove, and it sounds like they're interested in possibly moving forward at the moment again. And with that, we've moved the intersection over to basically accommodate lining up with their proposed or a proposed intersection with them, how how be it not a full four-lane at this time to accommodate though, you know, that area in the in the short term until it were to become four lanes. And in doing so, you can kind of see on this exhibit, although it's at least small with me looking at it here, but on the northeast corner, it kind of hugs close to the right of way there. So the proposal doesn't include the path at this time that goes along the east side of Bus Road and the north side of BB that is planned. Ultimately, that is definitely planned, but it's just not at this moment when I think the plan would be that when things were to look to development or something on the northeast corner, we would be looking at them to dedicate some land to be able to to make that work. However, as Larry talked, I think with Public Works as well, the the path can be added as well. We just need to work with the landowner, you know, and work on acquiring lands as needed through there to get the path. So that that can definitely be a high priority on on our part, working forward as well, but it probably wouldn't be with the immediate intersection improvements.
I would add to that if I could, that really, we we were stuck between a rock and a hard place on this bike path. And I mentioned this in the in the memo, we are, we are restricted in what tools we can use to acquire property for bike trails and bike paths. And in this case, what was kind of vague terminology, I guess I used in the memo, but it sounds like there's multiple owners of the Blair property at this point who aren't necessarily working together. The Blair property being that property just to the northeast of this intersection where this additional real estate would have to come from, that that maybe aren't, maybe it's not reasonable to anticipate easy discussions for hand arms-length acquisition of property. And so that's why we think it's important, right? At least at this point, to get this done and sever that issue from the topic. But as you can see in at the end of the memo, I, you know, it'd be up to the board at this point to decide whether to direct staff to pursue and and sort of outline in more detail what options would would be available to acquire that property in the short term. Otherwise, you can just wait and 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 wait till something does happen with the Blair property in terms of development, which would create an opportunity to require some dedication for that, a property for that purpose. The Public Works Committee did have some some good discussion about, well, how would kids in Shady Grove, if that develops, get up to the school and so on. And I think that the idea is that there's bike and actually vehicle connection between the middle school and the new elementary school. And really, that that traffic, the foot or and or bike traffic would would really probably flow up Damascus through the middle school property into the elementary as opposed to straight up Bus Road. And then also note that the school district's required to put in a crossing and a trail to get from the town subdivision on the west side of bus, just to the west side of the school district. So that will be taken care of. Really, what we're talking about with respect to the bike trail here is traffic coming from or people coming from from the east, from from town, from from the village over to this point and going north. So I think that there's there's options for people who don't want to drive to the school that are safe. But that's up to the board to decide whether to put us on a path for pursuing short-term options for acquiring that property to make that path possible.
Questions from from the board? The only comment I have is this, this does allow us to ensure that we do have that traffic is a traffic signal intersection by the time the school opens up in in August. If we go down to the road of of trying to acquire this land and making that part of that big path part of this, it it may not make that deadline. So that's the other reason the the Public Works Committee was talking about too. So potentially pursuing this, and then the board wishes, as Larry said, looking at this bike paths in, you know, in a parallel path, and it might take a bit of time just because of the circumstances of of the ownership of that particular property to get that in.
And then the last thing I would add is, is you can see the the Public Works Committee recommended that if Shady Grove really isn't ready to come to the table at this point and commit to contributing to this intersection, that the right turn, south turn off of BB for eastbound traffic be eliminated. And the the basically everything south of the right of right of way line on the south side of BB be eliminated for this for this phase of the project. And that was, we would definitely recommend that that be the case. That that the board approved that. So that, in other words, if Shady Grove isn't going to chip in, there's no reason to build to the south of what we need to pass them by, as long as we're lining up in a way that allows them to connect when they're ready to go.
Thanks, Larry, for that extra bit of information. Any questions from board members?
I think that makes a lot of sense to line up the intersection and get things going so they can be ready for when the school opens. But I I do agree that we shouldn't stop pursuing land to make that bike path connection. So I guess that kind of parallel that was mentioned earlier, start this, but keep keep in mind the bike path greater plans.
Other questions or comments from board members?
I agree with Heidi's comment.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Heidi. Other comments from board members or questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the the proposed intersection improvements to BB and Bus Road as recommended by staff in the memo, in addition to the exploring and identifying options to acquire sufficient additional property necessary for a bike trail to be constructed as described in the memo.
All right, we have a first and second. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to Community Development Authority.
We met, we met, Sarah. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. We met on December 14th, Monday. And there were two main items that we talked about. The first one was we did interviews with Weber Marketing, Signalfire and Distillery. The all three did phenomenal presentations. And then when we went into closed session, we discussed which one we would recommend that staff work with. They're still working with them. They're still putting details together and getting everything ironed out. So there's really no discuss and consider tonight. I can't, I'm not going to bring up who it was that we have recommended quite yet. But one of the meetings coming up, we will obviously be discussing that. And then the second thing that we we approved, or we looked at two Mad Rep, because every year we do the Mad Rep advertisement. Aaron had presented two of them. We we made some alterations to them. Aaron did email those out. And I think if I'm not, Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was put in last Friday. So that's all we really discussed. The next meeting would be the second Monday of of January.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? All right. Moving on then to utility commissions. Heidi?
Yeah, thanks, John. We met on the 16th. We had a presentation from Baker Tilly about the sewer rate charges that we've talked about are going to be changing. The lowest recommended charge change for the rates is not yet final, but it's looking to be not quite as high as we originally thought, and it is just on the sewer portion of bills. So I'll have an update on that as we finalize the any rate changes needed. We also talked about Hydrate, and they'll be installing another extraction well at Houston Park. They already have some They already have some installed at Houston Park to monitor any migrating pollutants. So they'll be installing another and we'll be voting on the utility budgets at our next meeting on January thirteenth. JJ, did you have anything to add?
Nope, I think you covered it all.
Great, thanks.
All right, thanks, Heidi. You're up again with the ordinance committee, either you or Paul.
Sure, we also, ordinance review also met on the sixteenth. We discussed a form received from a resident regarding snow fences. We also discussed some recommendations for the transient merchants, the food truck ordinance. And we discussed domestic chicken changes that the committee would recommend to our ordinance. So we recommended sets of changes and concepts on these topics. So I'm going to be gathering some comments and information from Aaron before we bring those ideas. Forward, you know, so we get kind of staff comments on those before we ask legal to draft some ordinance changes for us. We'll be talking about the bow hunting at our next meeting, which is January twenty seventh.
All right, thanks, Heidi. Next up is the Ad Hoc Architectural Review Committee. That was myself and Paul. I don't know, Paul, if you want to jump in here? Paul, you might be on mute. All right, well, sometimes Zoom can be a. Can cause fits. So I'll, I'll just cover this. The Ad Hoc Architectural Review Committee met. On December seventeenth, we covered really one main item, and that was discuss. A request from Dolphin Swim Academy to waive a requirement from Article Ford one D. Come a five of the Commerce Park Covenant, which requires infiltration basin. Minimum size of ten percent of the total building roof area. Because of the type of lot and soil that is, it really didn't make sense. And the staff as well as. Certainly Dolphin didn't think, you know, it would make sense to to require that requirement. Because it wouldn't do anything. So the committee agreed with staff and approved that. Waiting of that particular requirement. Aaron, anything to add to that?
I think that summed it up.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to Parks Rec and Forestry. And we've got a few action items there, but we'll start with Heidi with a summary.
Sure, most of the things that we talked about are covered in the action items, so we'll get those in a minute. I'd just add on. That we also discussed field usage with Manana Grove Soccer Club. There's never enough space for all the organizations that want to use it. So we're trying to work out. How that'll balance out. You know, coming up once we can start to play sports again between the soccer club and the school district and our programming. So that conversation went well. And then I can turn it over to Sean also. With the memos you have attached, the first thing is the West Lawn Fourth Edition Red Hawk Park. So I'm, Sean, if you're there?
Yep, I'm here. Hi, thanks, Heidi. Just, I I put a brief memo in your packet. We we obviously have the One Acre Park in West Lawn. That we're getting ready to do some development in, and we wanted to name that park. And with committee recommendation, we just kind of chose the very simple name of Red Hawk Park. Because it was, because it's on Red Hawk Trail. The Homburgs did not suggest a name for that parcel when they applied to the the park. So it gives us the opportunity to name it as we see fit. So that the committee voted to, as I mentioned. Name it Red Hawk Park.
Any questions or comments from? Board members on naming that park Red Hawk Park?
I'll make the motion to approve naming the One Acre Park in West Lawn Fourth Edition, Red Hawk Park.
Most on the second, thank you. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, assuming then Sean, you have the next item. I think Heidi kicked you up for that one too.
I put a little bit lengthier memo in your packet this time about the the overall twenty acre master plan. Been working with MSA on this since, and the residents of of the entire village since March got. Covid put a little bit of a halt on it and made us delay things a little bit, but put a memo in there and and just talked about. The the survey process and the residents that were involved in the process and the top amenities. What we're overall looking for tonight is just your approval, the village board approval on the the concept plan itself. We haven't had a chance to put dollar figures to the overall project yet as it as it's looking like. It's going to be phased in as opposed to receiving all twenty acres at one time. So with that, Dan Schmidt from. MSA has a brief presentation that he would like to do to just kind of show you what we've got.
Thanks, Sean. And. I think this runs into the other parks as well. But as Sean mentioned. The the village contracted us in early part of the year to get started on master planning for. The new community park, once known as Twenty Two Acre and now Twenty Acre with the refined. Parcel layout as well as One Acre Park and Three Outlots in the original fourth. Just the original, but the fourth edition section of West Lawn. And all this is identified as. Dedication from the development as well as a gap identified in the two thousand and eighteen Comprehensive Outdoor Rec Plan. Which is shown on the screen. Facilities identified then that have need were athletic fields, playground, picnic areas. Shelter with restroom and parking. And most of that was all carried through as we worked through the plan and public information engagement process. So as a quick reminder, the area that we're looking at is part of West Lawn Estates, west of the ongoing fifth edition. And kind of northwest of the fourth edition, including the lots that are within the fourth edition. So south of Gaston and east of us. So not too far off from where other discussions were earlier this evening. And the four lots that we are looking at are the Future Community Park, which is Lot A, the One Acre Park or the Pocket Park. Now known as Red Hawk Park. And then three existing outlots, which are basically detention areas within fourth edition. And the orange line on there is the existing trail routes, as well as where would likely connect up to the Future Community Park. So Sean mentioned, we did a survey as part of this, got over six hundred responses, which is a great turnout. It's almost ten percent. Of the village population, which is great for a public survey on a park master plan. Top amenities, restroom, playground equipment, shelter, paths, hockey, site furnishings, parking and such. Swimming pool was in the mix, but was quickly omitted as not the right fit for this facility. As well as the ongoing improvements over at Bakken with the splash pad, kind of put that on the back burner. So get right into it. This is what we've come up with as a plan. It is. A likely a phased implementation, as Sean mentioned. I'll get to that in just a minute, but kind of run through some of the main amenities. And the focal points of the northern section would be the restroom, shelter with a small community room, something that could do. Like birthdays, wedding showers, things like that. Not a huge space, but something indoor, which the village is currently lacking in. Its park amenities, some reservable. And one option that was considered with that, given the location of the site and the views from there. Would be looking at some type of second floor deck or balcony, being able to utilize the roof space, not just. Have a roof up there that can't utilize some of that view. That basically looks all the way over to the Capitol in the right directions, as well as potentially green roof or or other features. Adjacent to that would be an inclusive playground, similar in scale to what's at Bakken. But with a port in place surfacing and fully accessible structures, as well as some potential for. Sand play or natural play nearby. The parking would be spread out throughout the site to help limit kind of the impact of. Of what neighbors would see looking into the site. And most of it tries to kind of face away from the cars. But also provide parking in the areas where it's really needed. So you have a small bank over by the shelter, another bank by the basketball tennis courts and playground. And then a larger bank over by what would be the slope down to the band shell and amphitheater. Which kind of becomes the the key focal point of the southern section of the park. And then in the slides coming up, I have a few character images of what some of these features could look like too. So. We have some more that were in the original public information meetings, but try to keep this short for everyone. The night we admitted most of those. Next to the band shell would be Sludding Hill. So kind of taking some of the cut that would come from creating that amphitheater space. Could get used, they're pushed into a sludding hill as well as potentially working with the Homburgs as they're regrading the site after the. Rock excavation that they're currently doing could kind of work into that. The exterior of the site has a perimeter trail. Ends up being just under three quarters of a mile, about thirty six hundred feet. And it has two kind of cross access points. Encumbracing the athletic field for accessibility as well as creating a more interesting trail network. The southern side of the site would be returned more to native plantings. Possibly a prairie type restoration with some open areas and mowed or gravel trails. As well as a detention fishing pond in what would be the southeast quarter of the site. Throughout the site, there's a few open air shelters, one in the south, one in the middle and one in the north. Those would be smaller. Kind of picnic shelters that could be reservable or just left open with a few picnic tables. And then on the north side is a seasonal hockey rink that could be flooded, would be just grass space. We're showing right now a sidewalk around that perimeter. And then seven tennis and or pickleball courts. On the the north side. The numbers kind of ranged as we went through the process. Some members of some of our meetings recommended six as being the standard for. The US Tennis Association. And then it was recommended if you go seven, it works better for potential play for high school or. Athletic leagues. So we showed that they can fit, certainly as the implementation goes forward, that good need could be assessed. And if there's no need for seven to fit with any use from school district or other sports that way, certainly could be reduced. But seven does fit and can could work within the confines of the space. Also shown around the trail, they show up a little small, but you might see the little red kind of half circles would be fitness stations. And these vary from pull up bars to more mechanical features. That they have now and could be anywhere from one piece of equipment to several in some of those nodes throughout the the trail system. One other piece to note is we're recommending a kind of vegetated buffer or some type of setback for development of at least twenty feet. From the property lines surrounding the park. So we work to keep the trail within that setback, if not further. As well as recommending some type of birmingham vegetation around that perimeter to a certain degree to to provide a little bit of privacy for the neighbors. But not make it so dense that the park becomes cut off and becomes a place of. Of inaccess and and potential crime or or other issues. Along London Avenue, showing the possibility to have some angled parking with a boulevard within the street. To add some access to the southern section of the park. And part of that came out of. The phasing piece that Sean mentioned. And the likely dedication of this parcel. Is going to be within two to possibly three sections. The first is the larger southern section that comes up to about where the connection. To the road is to the west and then runs across the park. It runs about thirteen and a half acres and would likely come with sixth edition of West Lawn. And then there's about six acres on the north side that would probably come more of seventh edition dedication. And the Homburgs also wanted to note that there's one acre in the northeast corner that's currently privately held. But all indications are that would be dedicated along with the rest of the site. But it was noted that there's a chance that that may not be. Sean and I looked at that and determined that there's enough room to move the amenities out of that area without changing the master plan as it stands. So the assumption was made that that would be included, but certainly if we needed to move up towards that line where the the blue and the orange meet. If you have the the larger version in your packet, it might show up a little better. You could move the hockey up as well as the tennis courts. And make it out of those parcels if for some reason that wasn't able to be dedicated at the same time as the rest of the site. And then there would just need to be some slight modification to the trail alignment. There's, as I mentioned, on the overall site, there's a connection on the trail to. The Pocket Park, which is just south, one one set a lot south of London Avenue there. So that trail would come up and be able to run into this park and then potentially continue on through. The rest of the village or into another connection of the future to be determined. And then there would be sidewalk connections. To the east and then another road connection in the parking lot on the north. So some of the features to kind of run through some potential options. Looking at restroom and shelter buildings, so kind of a range of options, something that has the interior space, a little bit of glass to keep it open. And a flat roof that could potentially house some type of of deck or other surface. And then also could be something that's a little bit more conservative in design, more similar to what's at Bakken. Where it's just a more typical interior space with an open shelter, restrooms. And if you had a time of development, the community room wasn't needed because it was included in other developments. Could certainly go to just being a survey or some type of concession area. Playground equipment, some inclusive playground, likely a wheelchair access ramp, some natural play area as potential options. Having some sidewalk around the outside perimeter and well as well as port in place surfacing to to make it accessible for everyone. Trail network. So the red is the paved asphalt trail and then the yellow are those mowed trails that I mentioned. And those could be gravel, mulch, grass, kind of whatever material fit the needs at the time. And then the band shell being mostly an open structure, so it could serve as another open picnic shelter when it's not being used for programmed events. But would serve well as a covered band shell for music in the grove as it continues. As well as potential options of how you could work in an amphitheater, could just be a mode slope. Or you can terrace it and have stone seats or stone walls within there to create those more defined terrace areas. And you want me to go on, Sean, or should we take questions on Twenty Acre first before we go on to the others?
I think it'd be a good opportunity for people had questions on the big park.
I'll run back up to the. Main plan.
Right, so I'll I'll start and then I'll kick it to board members. So Sean, again, are the only bathrooms in this Twenty Acre Park? In the shelter or are we going to have some associated with other spots in here? I'm just curious.
Yeah, they'd likely just be within the shelter building. And certainly. Something we kind of looked at and felt there was enough proximity. I mean, it's twenty acres. It is a large site, but it isn't that large. That being able to get up there. It is also positioned in the center of most of the active zones. So if you're using the southern area. So if you're using the southern area, you should be able to walk up to that piece, certainly being something that could be considered additionally, but partly for access to sewer and helping to minimize the potential sewer. Not dedication fees, but sewer access. Limiting that to one spot within the parcel could potentially save. I think it was mentioned up to six figures probably and additional MMSD fees.
Good. It seems a little light to me for twenty acres, but that's my opinion dealing with a toddler has to go to the bathroom years ago. So that's that's just my two cents. Otherwise, it's overall, it's very, uh, there's a lot going on here, which I think will be wonderful additions to to the village. Things that we don't currently have as well as just some expansion of some other things, you know, additional basketball court and volleyball courts, always nice. Dedicated fishing pond would great for those those that like to do that too and pickleball or or tennis as well as bringing back hockey, I think, or and then just those folks that like to do a little walking or running. Questions or comments from board members?
I just have a comment that I'm really happy to see that we're making the 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 view kind of like a focal point of the park as well. So I'm really excited about the amphitheater and that space. But overall, it looks like a great use of the park and with all the walking trails or running. I'm I'm always in favor of more bathrooms as well, but it it looks like it's really well thought out with different things that we don't currently have. So thank you.
I agree. This is great. Does is there a price tag or do we not? Is that not part of this particular part of the process?
We're not quite there yet. We've started to pull the numbers and work through that. We wanted to kind of get approval through the committee and board level before we really dove into that too much if there are kind of two comments like from Chair Williams is if we are looking at in the second bathroom or other things that could have some significant changes as to how it might be phased, which could affect costs pretty significantly. But I think the intent is to come back with kind of a range of a range of costs in a phasing probably in January. It might be February, but at some point, just to kind of give an idea, it will be significant. But it's also not likely going to happen at once, just given the dedication of the land for one, but also the scope of the project, it likely would be would be phased in and we don't have the line quite drawn on here, but you could kind of do it in two sections if outside the dedication would be also looking at kind of the passive rec area. So bringing in the road and kind of activating the band shell, the pond, and then you could leave some more of the active areas. Need the playground shelter and that as well as the northern section that's in the the second dedication to a future phase, but it could also be done in multiple pieces. There's no reason you couldn't have the playground in other pieces and you just have to consider temporary bathrooms or I think the only other spot that would probably work well without being exceptionally expensive would be modifying this southern open air shelter into being some type of bathroom. Because you'd be able to possibly parcel off a piece of that and minimize the effects of the MMSD fees, which was a discussion we had with Sean, Andrew. And I and I kind of worked worked back through with Kevin and some others at MSA and how that gets attributed. And it's a combination of parcel size and land uses. So there'd likely be some type of parcelling off of a section for the restroom kind of shelter building as the dedications move forward for that piece, just to help kind of mitigate that cost for I think both the Homburgs and for the village.
And if you don't mind if I add on briefly, I think the way we tried to lay out the trail system leads us to be able to work in phases on this project, depending on costs and how development progresses, you know, progresses in the area. So that was definitely one goal, you know, that we could do some of the park and then keep adding on to it, but we felt it was important to get this going right away so that as the Homburgs sell lots around it, they would know what's going to be built in the backyard. So it's not unexpected. You know, when we present these plans to the homeowners.
Other questions or comments from board members?
I have two questions. The first thing, what 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 kind of timeframe are we looking at for the development? I know it's going to be phased in. Likely depends on how quickly the area in that space of the village develops, but are we looking at two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-eight? Are we looking at two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-five?
I'll jump in quick and then Sean can add in anyone else. I think the preliminary discussions would be looking at the southern section. So that first phase of the dedication kind of it's a little hard to see on there, but it's a red dash line on the plan that runs up to. I'll draw that line back on there again to about this portion. Would likely be sometime in the next five years if the market continues at its current pace. The northern section is just strictly based on on lot development from what we've been told from the Homburgs. I think Heidi's mentioned it in some of the meetings we've had, there's certainly opportunity for the village to discuss with the Homburgs and put some leverage on dedicating all the land in different phasing if necessary, but that would likely put that northern portion probably closer into ten years out possibly. So it'd be between five and 10 years to to start looking at it. And I don't know if you had any other thoughts, Sean?
No, I think that's exactly what we talked about. Sooner than later on the on the first, but could be five to 10 on the second. Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
Thank you. Go ahead, John. I got two other questions, but go ahead.
With that phasing, then I think I think then you guys do need to look at another bathroom. Because you aren't going to get that northern and the main one for 10 years out and you're going to be having the amphitheater, the sledding hill, the pond, all being used and no restroom for for the citizens that are using that. So that one small one you pointed out, Dan, way at the bottom, that might be easily accessible to, you know, oh, some kind of connection. And again, it's not going to be as big as certainly the one that's being proposed. But if you're going to have a five year difference, you probably need to have something there, I think. In my mind, it's it's just me.
In addition, if I can, if I can ask here, is the developer going to do any of the preliminary ground movement as part of that dedication? My understanding is this isn't good property for building homes and I think we're looking at a fair amount of investment in in moving ground to create tennis courts, hockey area, parking, athletic fields and so forth.
So in past conversation, Andrew is not committed, but has suggested that they'd be kind of willing as their process goes through. They're currently mining basically the the core of the site underneath what would be the future playground, basketball court for rock material, I believe, for the products on the existing fifth edition. The northern section of the site is relatively flat, so the that partly goes into the the sighting and the the design of keeping a majority of the development of more active features on the northern section, rather than trying to fill them in on the more sloped southern section. But the short answer is yes, they intend to work with the village to at least some degree to help kind of pre-sculpt the land as they kind of work to to backfill where they're doing their excavation. They even went to as far as kind of calling out that they kind of want to know where the shelter is proposed, so that when they're putting the fill material back in, they can put the right type of materials. So the village doesn't have to come back in and excavate out basically landfill or some inappropriate materials. So it sounds like they're definitely willing to to work with the village to to kind of somewhat pre-sculpt some of this as they kind of put things back to. I mean, if you go out there now, there's a few thousand yards of surcharge material built up on the middle of the site. So even the lines that you see in the concept, there's kind of light gray existing topography isn't there. What's isn't what's there today? There's a twenty to thirty foot tall pile of dirt that stretches most of the site. So there's significant work that they have to do just to kind of put things back to being buildable themselves as they work through this. So I think that's that's the intent. And obviously, that's something that future developer agreements and the planning can another legal process and kind of work out what they're required to do as part of the dedication.
Oh, that that that's awesome, because they're already moving some of that ground and to get it so it's roughed in versus having you start from scratch would certainly help the community, our community. Yeah, you can see the gravel piles from ten miles, six miles away at this point. It's like mini mountains in the village cottage grove right now. No, snowcaps. Well, snowcaps have melted, I guess I should say. The other question I have is, is parks and rec, have they looked at, you know, how much additional staff and 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 what it's going to take to maintain a park of this size? I I like I like the idea that we've got a lot of areas here. And again, just looking at the the drawing, I would say forty percent that is not maintained, but it looks like a looks like a lot of maintenance is going to be involved with this.
Yeah, I don't I I'll let Sean talk to the exact maintenance, but they're they're in considerations as far as how much they've looked into that to date, but and there are certainly pieces that that go into adding in another community park. I mean, adding in another Bakken or or that. So there certainly will need to be operational changes and and considerations as this moves forward. In addition, just the strict capital cost of the development.
Yeah, true. It's something that we're we're looking at. Obviously, we're a little bit far out in doing that and yeah, you you're right, 20 more acres of of parkland is going to stress our current staff. Right now, I'm I'm feeling like we could do that with additional equipment, like maybe another wide area mower and another seasonal staff, but it'll it'll certainly be something that we look at harder as we get a little bit closer to that. And that would be something that we would try and forecast in the in our in our budget discussions and our financial management plan.
Sean, maybe I missed it, but I would suspect that you would have some potential revenue streams as it relates to programs. Not only that, we would cover the directive, you know, the expenses of those programs, but some you know, administrative or percent that would go back towards potentially help and support the maintenance of those fields.
Yeah, we're, I mean, the athletic field space would would certainly be something that we could rent out. The tennis courts could be something that we would offer to USTA, United States Tennis Association and and they often rent tennis courts. So that would be an avenue of of revenue as well as just the 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 four season shelter, which would give us an amenity that the the village currently doesn't have and be able to rent that out for the entire year. Not not a great amount of 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 money, but it's certainly something that could help offset.
Are there questions or comments from board members?
I just wanted to add that there were a number of residents that took surveys, attended meetings, provided their input. So we appreciate that very much.
All right. So this is a discussing, consider at least the preliminary plan here that's sketched out that MSA has worked through and again, as Heidi just alluded to, a lot of people contributed to that too. And I think it's been some very good comments about the work that's been done here. I think it's again going to be a nice space for the community to to enjoy as certainly as well as those that are near as well. So any motion on this either way?
President Williams, if I may, part of the the whole, as Dan mentioned, part of the whole master plan plan process included the areas in fourth ad as well. Wondering if we could just, I'll Dan, if you can, you know, briefly go through what that looks like. This, we're kind of looking for approval on the entire the the large park as well as the fourth ad as well.
Sideshow there now, the I'll run through those quick as well. So there's a binder, we and so also looking at the Red Hawk Park site. This is what it looked like in March, which pretty much looks the same. You can see some of the start of the dirt piles up in the community park to the north. Based on input from the community meetings and kind of discussions with staff, this is the plan that we're proposing for that site. It would include about an eighteen hundred square foot playground, which would give opportunity for a five to 12 structure as well as a a two to five play structure with some sidewalk and benches. Around that, we'd be looking at about a twenty by twenty-four open covered shelter, bike racks, and then kind of a unique feature would be looking at basically what would be designed for inline hockey, but could certainly have other uses as a multi-purpose pave space. That would be a forty-five by ninety inline hockey rink would be if it's done in concrete, would likely have a curb around the edge to kind of help maintain pieces and possibly if programming in the village wanted to, you could do temporary boards or or smaller boards in there, but it also could just be left open as with some nets. Be a little bit of green space around the perimeter. We're showing a thirty foot setback, just a mere an existing utility easement on the west side. Although there was the original fifty foot easement that was modified earlier this year. That still provides some open space for informal play around the edges as well as showing a landscape buffer would be enhancing the tree line in the north, depending on how much of that is removed with the sixth edition development to the north and then a little bit on the east side for the existing homes. And there likely be some consideration. It's unknown exactly what's going to happen to the west, whether that's a potential additional dedication of open space or an additional lot or two. And talking with Kevin from MSA, it wasn't it doesn't seem like the and the school district has definitive answer on exactly how Red Hawk will go through and what those first couple of parcels will look like. Although it was in the one of the original agreements that there would be at least one parcel to the west of the existing outlot as the road either curves up towards London or however its ultimate alignment would go. And then within this in the landscape and there'd be a small rain garden to manage stormwater due to the nearest connection currently being about two or three properties down. So rather than the expense of tearing up a sewer line all the way over there. The rain garden on site was deemed to be adequate to manage the onsite stormwater. And then you can see as a dash line that goes up north would be that trail connection up to the community park extending that existing trail through Red Hawk up and in. Any questions on that before jumping in the others? I will say the the playground in particular is something that Sean's hoping to work on and get in the ground in twenty-one. The rest will be pending park development funds and other planning that way. The other lots, so these, sorry, some character images of what we'd be looking at. So play structure. So play structure, potential open air shelter, and then the inline skating or hockey rink. This is a little bit bigger than what would be there, but kind of shows the general idea. Then the three outlets, so as part of the original dedication, there was intent for some some form of development to go on. Out of the court process from twenty eighteen and some discussion since there had been talk of putting in fitness court. Which had been about a fifty by fifty pad with different equipment on it. Some of the neighbors were concerned about that. And so we kind of took a step back and Sean wanted us to to look at these as well as we were doing the master planning for the other two parks. So this is the most northern lot, largest stormwater pond. What we're recommending for there would be a simple path, probably about six feet wide, going out to a small. Either rollout or or fixed pier, not huge, could have a bench or something on it as well. And then a small gathering space. Additional to there that could be used by the neighbors or or others as well that are using the trail system. Andrew, during the last meeting, suggested that the Hummers might have some stone material that they'd be willing to donate. Or sell at a discount to the village for some type of feature, whether he mentioned fire pit. But could also possibly use for some seating or something around there. So this would just be a small space that could be used for neighborhood gatherings, not a huge, huge formal space. Could be just a couple stone boulders around the edge with a gravel base. Or it could be something a little bit more formal with pavers or extending the concrete. The second lot down is a section of trail that runs between two of the detention basins. There would be looking at a more simple amenity addition. So just a bench on a concrete pad that would allow for an ADA space as well as an opportunity to pull a stroller up next to it. And then looking at something like a swinging bench on one on the other side. And these could be flip flopped depending on what made sense at the time of development. But they're showing the two options. Is that bench also would have some additional space next to it for ADA access. But again, works well for someone that has a stroller or other features. And then most other lead lot is along the trail connection that will connect over to the new school. So looking at that one, it'd be again either a bench or a swinging bench, looking at a slightly larger pad there. This could potentially serve as kind of a little mini gathering node for kids who are using the trail to get to school. Or parents who are waiting for kids to come back. As well as an opportunity to kind of overlook onto the the rec fields that are on the school property to the south. It provides a little more removed space from the property line and the properties there. But still is allowed to utilize the the public space that is there and open for use. Any questions on any of those three? I can run back through if there's questions on one or the other.
Are are there any additional liabilities for the village by having a pier?
Typically not. I mean, as long as it's installed properly and is not a hazard. There's not typically any outright. Additional risk. That there's always an opportunity for something to happen. And I guess your attorney would speak better to that, but my understanding, no.
Yeah, yeah, that's your answer to the question.
And I was, Troy, the answer to the question, as Daniel said, that's that's right on. You know, we don't, I hate to, I I always hate to say this, but it's true. We don't really worry about liability when it comes to municipal owned spaces. You have a a pretty strong municipal liability protection. From a legal standpoint in the state of Wisconsin, in addition, what's left is insured. I always I always say the best thing to do is to design something that's unlikely to hurt people. But if it happens to, it's not really much of a worry at at the municipal level.
Great, thank you. The the other, the other question I have is outlots. How how much maintenance, I guess, are we going to do on each of these outlots? Is is, you know, having a trail, are we just going to have a trail? No mowing along the trail, no mowing around the ponds, are we going to have a bunch of mowing around the ponds? Again, I'm thinking of staff requirements to maintain these types of structures, facilities.
Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think these are all currently maintained, these are existing outlets.
Yeah, that's a good question, Troy. Yeah, we we currently are mowing and maintaining those the trails as we speak. So it's as of right now, it's not anything that we would need to add additional staff to do.
So basically, the the spaces that are within these red lines are currently publicly owned parcels. So the village is already mowing them. The path itself would likely be concrete or asphalt, so it would be little to no maintenance. And the gathering space, if installed, could certainly be designed in a way that's of minimal maintenance. And the pier itself, given access in a pond like this. You could use a rollout that's kind of pretty easy to bring in and out the beginning and end of the season. Or you could do a a more fixed piece and then likely could probably stay out through the winter. Since there isn't going to be a lot of uplift and and that being in a small pond like this. So it should be pretty minimal, and that's kind of part of what we would look at with this. There had been some initial plans, I think in in the Hamburg drawings of like a gazebo. I think in the southwestern section of the trail here in particular on that than the outlet D or eight. And given the the addition of that in the Red Hawk Park for the covered shelter. Kind of thought that was duplicating of of village effort. Certainly, if the the neighborhood wants to band together and and push for one or self-fund one is through the homeowners association or something. That could be something that's talked about in the future that they could bring that out if that's something that's a strong enough desire. But it didn't seem to be the best use of village resources for for that at this time.
Great, awesome. And then logistically, do you have a a map of how close Red Hawk Trail is to the twenty acre park? I mean, those are those are really close together, right?
Yep, let me see, I'll go back up toward the beginning here, it kind of shows up. So basically, it's a parcel and a road, so you're about a hundred feet, hundred and two hundred feet. Between the what would be the the right away line or the parcel line, the south side of the community park and then the north side of Red Hawk. So the connection is is very close. Yeah, there just basically falls right off the edge of the the path. If you're right on the edge of the screen there, you might be able to see the property line there for for those lots.
I I guess I'm I'm struggling with the idea that you've got two parks that are, it's like one lot and one street away from each other. And you've got outlot C, you know, should we be taking those funds? And rather than doing B and C and really putting it into A, which is a more of a a community, larger park area. I I can't see why we'd want a par- uh uh two parks that literally is one one lot away from another park. And a little park that we'd have playground equipment, we're going to have playground equipment. What's 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 the feet? Is it is it hundred and fifty feet away? Is it two hundred and fifty feet away? I I guess I'm trying to see the logic in that.
I don't know, Sean wants to jump in at all, part of it's the level of service. So the pocket park is what would be considered, it's a neighborhood park. It's a small, small facility, really geared towards. Satisfying the needs of kind of homeowners within that area. You do have the distance within the design of keeping the two playgrounds fairly well separated. And certainly if well used, I think you would see good use on both structures as far as playground and rec space goes. Other piece as far as phasing is the Red Hawk Park ideally, these sections we put in in twenty one. Some of these other features possibly including the playground on the north side, maybe five, ten years out. And on top of that, the the Red Hawk has been a plotted park for a number of years. So it's overdue for for its improvements. And I'll let Sean jump in if he has anything else.
No, I think I think that's that's a lot of it. One of the, what we're looking at, Troy, for Red Hawk Park is probably a fifty thousand dollar playground. But we're looking at five to ten plus years down the road for the big park is is more like a four hundred thousand dollar playground. That's probably, that could be on a conservative estimate. It was more about when we were doing this, trying to get something in that one acre spot. As the residents in in Westlon Fort have been really looking forward to something happening in that park area. So we we wanted to, as Dan mentioned, it's a level of service, we wanted to provide something sooner than later. And waiting until we can get that second, possibly third dedication for the big park could be quite a while. That was just a thought process of of the folks that we that we met with and also committee.
Okay, all right, no, no, that 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 makes sense, Sean, I I get that. You know, I I will ask the question then, you know, literally a budding up to that park. Will be a playground at an element at the elementary school, correct? Which will be existing next year?
Yes, correct, there will be a playground in in both locations. So if you think about the Red Hawk Park is kind of in the middle of both locations. The, you know, and not that Dublin Park is is a huge walk from from where Red Hawk Park is or from where Westlon is. But we're not, you know, we haven't had any communication with the school district as to what they're going to do. I've reached out and tried to get them to communicate with with us as to, so we can kind of look at planning amenities for the the twenty plus acre park. But there has been no communication there. And so anything that we did would be dwarfed by anything that they did. But yeah, you're right, there there is, you know, a a going to be some sort of a playground. Within several hundred yards away from where this park is.
All right, all right, thank you, Sean. Thanks, Dan, appreciate it.
I'm just wondering if we're going to be stacking any of these ponds with fish or are there already fish in there? I just don't know.
There would likely be some natural accumulation, but to to make them good fishing ponds, they would likely have to be stocked. That's something that hasn't been discussed, it's more of an operational piece.
Sure, yeah, I was just curious.
Something Sarah that we're going to have to learn about. I have not stocked a pond to this point. So it's some, you know, this this whole thing is exciting to me because there's a lot of different recreation opportunities throughout this entire. The sixth ad as as well as the fourth ad. So we're excited about this and we're excited about learning how to how to serve our residents better.
Yeah, and I just, you know, the a little bit of feedback might be not to call it community park because we already have a community park. So maybe just titling it as this rolls out to the broader community. I'm not sure what you would call it, but I wouldn't want people to get confused.
We're, we've kind of got a a the possibility of a name for the park. But we're waiting for that, the the parkland to be platted and officially given to the village. So once that happens, Andrew Homburgs will either suggest a name or we will suggest suggest a name for the park. We just put it as community is just because it is a, it is considered a community park.
Sure, yeah.
But I understand what you mean, because community park isn't far away either, so. Yep, completely understand, thanks, Sarah.
And so you're looking for approval of the whole plan tonight?
It is correct, if if President Williams would like us to revisit restrooms in that southern dedication. We can certainly do that and come back. Obviously, we're, this is just the overall concept, it can change as as maybe the village needs change between now. And when we actually get this dedication, but we can certainly revisit restrooms on the southern part.
I think they'd get used. And again, that wouldn't be something as large as the future pavilion and everything. Just something small so that you address, you know, some of the uses that are down south in the portion of it. As well as just, we know that there's going to be a delay between this southern portion versus northern portion. And so if we if we have a large section of park that's done, you're going to have people there. And I think it would be good as long as it's not, you know, going to be. Crazy engineering to to get the.
It's, I don't think it's the engineering, I think it's just the cost of adding is what was one of the original drivers, but certainly something that can be looked at. One other thing that came up was potential of adding something on the north side of. The Red Hawk parcel as well. But I think it probably fit better here. So certainly something we'll look for as we're putting the cost estimate together and and see what the impacts that has on it.
All right, any other questions or comments or a motion from the from the board?
I move to approve as presented with some additional consideration for restrooms on the south end of the six dad park.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion then? All right, having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Very nice. And then Sean, you have, or Heidi, you have one more thing in here, discuss and consider purchasing two sun shade for. Shades for Bakken Park with unused project funds. So everything's kind of wrapped up now for Bakken and and your, there's a little bit of more. Money left over for those shade structures, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We came in under budget, we had originally cut the sun shades from the plan to save some costs. And from feedback, Sean has received more shade. For parents and caregivers to take advantage of at splash pads is great. And the sun shades are scheduled for an increase in price in twenty twenty one. So we figured we should go ahead and purchase those since we saved some money. And we can get them at the lower cost in twenty twenty. Sean, you have anything to add on to that?
No, I think you, I think you got it, Heidi, yeah, we were just pleasantly surprised that the project came in a little bit under budget. And we took those out early on just to make sure that it stayed at the budget, on budget. And, yeah, we're just looking to purchase these now before they go up.
Sean, would would staff and be able to install these, I'm assuming they would?
Yes, that is.
We have everything, everything there that's that's needed, it's just a matter of, because it was built for that, but it's a matter of just installing them, correct?
Yeah, everything was was done underground that needs to be done. So that we could do that in-house and save ourselves a little bit of money.
And what were the costs of the sun shades?
The two sun shades were thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty one dollars and ten cents.
I'll motion to approve purchasing two sun shades for Bakken Park with the unused project funds.
Second.
All right, we have first from Paul, second from Melissa, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Heidi or Sean with?
Uh, that's all I had from our meeting, um, we'll meet again on January twenty first.
All right, thanks, guys. All right, thanks, guys. Uh moving on then to Deer Grove EMS. This is either Troy or Sarah.
Uh I can I can tackle here and Sarah, you can help me fill in the blanks. Uh we met uh last Thursday, the seventeenth. Um you know, calls are actually slightly up um this year now versus last year. We had been behind, which is um a good and it's bad. Uh we're adding additional staffing, so we want to see calls up. But um we don't want to see calls up because we don't want to see the need for it. So uh Corona uh virus update, COVID nineteen updates. Uh it looks like hopefully all staff will be vaccinated before the end of January. Um what else here? Uh we went reviewed some billing rates and we did uh up some rates on billing. Uh we 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 had the staff advisory committee and in further discussions um decided that it really didn't make sense to have that additional committee. Uh the idea at this point is to uh have more discussions as the year develops uh on staffing needs and the budget um uh possible budget cons um uh effects of those staffing needs uh throughout the year rather than uh drop this uh on on the committee in September and have to quickly make a decision on that. Um we will be doing the chief review in January. The next meeting is on January twenty-first. I will uh revert back to Sarah and I see Chief Lang is also on if they have any additions to what I've commented on.
Nope, no additions for me.
Chief Lang, since you're stuck with us, anything from you?
We just want to hear your voice, chief. That's all. Come on.
Oh, man.
Going once, going twice.
It's like he's also struggling with the the Zoom too, unfortunately. Well, certainly appreciate Chi- Chief Lang, uh stick him with us uh as well. Oh, he's waving at us, so uh I think he just wants to wish us happy holidays. I'm sure that's what it was. Um then moving on to uh reports from village officers. Uh Larry, anything from you from Stafford? Anything else?
Nothing else.
All right, uh COVID update. I usually rattle through a bunch of folks, but you know what? I'm gonna change it up tonight and just say, does anybody have any pertinent updates related to COVID when the normal uh list of staff members? JJ's shaking. No, Matt?
That that's a good idea, John. Um uh e- everyone's healthy at village hall, uh tax collections. Um uh people are it uh from the amount that are coming in the way they are, people seem to be um not as many are coming in for the in-person. So um the communications there are working well, a lot are utilizing Dropbox or online options. Um so that's that's going well. Um and one non-COVID update, this is uh the last meeting for our cable TV coordinator, Derek Westby. So thank you to Derek, especially uh, you know, helping us navigate this uh difficult year with Zoom meetings and, you know, keeping things live on cable and livestreamed on YouTube. So uh thanks to Derek and he's uh helped helped us. Uh he recommended a a hire to me and um we've hired a a Spencer Meyer from uh he currently works as well in in uh Stoughton and he's gonna be helping us out starting in January. He's actually training tonight with Derek, so thanks to those two.
All right, um usually hear something from Lieutenant Wagner, so I'm gonna I'm gonna queue you up at least because I see your smiling face there, Matt.
Uh no, I just have one quick uh comment is that we did get um well, I I we haven't got it yet, but we are going to be getting um just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in reimbursement. So um we submitted uh over six hundred and some thousand. Uh we were initially allotted a hundred and nine thousand and we are getting just a little over a hundred and twenty thousand. So uh when we get those funds, I will have Deb let us know so we know that we have got them. Other than that, I have no further update.
Okay, and Dan, I know you're still there. You're just looking at, is there anything chief labor from your perspective?
No, nothing, no updates. Everything's going well.
I like to hear that. All right, I got a thumbs up from JJ already. He's good. Sean's already talked enough tonight, so we don't need to hear from him anymore. Um.
Good on President Williams.
Um hopefully all of well, otherwise I give you guys the opportunity to speak up. Once, twice, three times. Moving on then, um communication with Sunday's business, consider vouchers. That's a key thing we need to look at. Any questions or comments uh from the vouchers list as presented?
Motion to approve the vouchers.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Is there a second?
I I do have a question, if I can.
Let's get the motion first, Troy. Let's get the motion second, Troy first, and then uh get your question, all right?
I'll second.
Okay, Sarah, a second, thank you. Now, please, Troy with your question.
Uh on page one. No, no, I hey, I wrote them down because I have gray moments, so I I have to do that now. Um on page one, uh there's a a A-one excavating uh and that is for the Vilas Road Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. I I guess I see that's under general um billing. It's not under sewer and water. Why is that not under sewer and water?
I'll jump in. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll jump in here. Um there it it's a it's considered a project, so until it's completely finished and audited and spread out amongst the assets, it's put in the capital funds project or the capital fund and then it'll end up going to water, sewer, where wherever it belongs.
So so what you're saying is it'll shift from general funds, capital improvement, back to sewer water once it's completed then?
Once it's audited and the assets are allocated to the funds that they belong to, yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
As well as the Troy, as well as the accounting for the uh the develop or the property owner paid for um a portion of that project as well. So that sounds sounds like just the accounting and accounting aspects of it is why it's listed that way.
If 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 we paid for seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, what did they pay for?
Um three hundred uh three hundred thirty-ish, three hundred sixty, around there, thousand.
Okay, all right, all right.
And the and the uh and the amount that the water and sewer utility paid is uh um were taken from impact fees, not not ratepayers.
Okay, all right, thanks, Matt. Uh page four Cottage Grove Chamber, uh just so I understand, we've got four different, three different lines, three hundred and sixty dollars. Is is it is it three hundred and sixty dollars in total to be a chamber member for the village? Or is each different department, Aaron, John, and Matt have their own membership?
There's four. It's Matt, Aaron, John, and Chief. And it's.
Well, it it lists three on the bills, Aaron, John, and Matt. They're on the on the on the vouchers. That's why I'm asking. And then and is is it it is it each person or is it total? Because two are at one-ten and one is at one forty.
Right, um and that's the way their pricing is, the original one. The first member is one forty and then each additional member is discounted at to one-ten.
Okay, all right.
And that's that's a two thousand or twenty twenty-one expense, but.
Okay, all right.
For twenty twenty.
And then under general dollar, we've got court restitution. What is that all about?
Um so it it's a fine that was paid by somebody who got a citation and then they owe back monies to Dollar General. So we collect it as the court and then in turn pay Dollar General what has been collected.
Okay, all right. And this is, I promise this is my last question. Uh page seven, I'm I'm looking it up here. Um what is the the burden company? What is the maintenance service agreement? Who who are they and what are we paying them for for service?
That's the um clock on building. And we do a maintenance contract every year. They do one service um to upkeep the clock, make sure it's running right, make sure it's keeping time as it should. Um yeah, that's what they do.
All right, all right. I I just never, I guess I hadn't seen that name before and it doesn't say any sort of description, so I had no idea what it was for. Thank you, appreciate it, Deb.
Sure.
All right, any other uh discussion on this? The motion's second on the floor. All right, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then moving on.
To adjourn.
Well, we got a couple other things there, Troy, but you're 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 on the right track.
Oh, man, I'm excited here, guys. It's only nine forty-nine.
Uh uh just a couple more minutes of your time, please. Uh correspondence, uh other than the ones that are related, I think that all the board members had related to library. I didn't have any others. Uh Lisa, anything? Not Lisa's shaking her head, nope. Okay. Um upcoming community events, anybody have anything? We had our big push earlier in the month for uh Christmas in the Grove. I don't know if there's anything else lining up, Heidi, or anybody aware of?
Not at the moment.
All right, everybody just needs to stay safe. Uh future agenda, excuse me, future agenda items. I know we're gonna have some more plan commission items. Um that'll be the second meeting, though. Um Matt, anything that you're aware of?
Yes, I mean, we should have the uh general engineering contract wrapped up and uh we should have um we should have the CDA's uh recommendation to the board on um the marketing firm. We should have those terms wrapped up, uh Aaron and I, and legal review.
All right, thanks, Matt.
I have one request um that I talked to um talked to John about previously, but I just wanted to uh throw it out there that I think sometime it would be beneficial to have some kind of information session um from Hydrate. They had recently had some violations of the Clean Air Act and there's a settlement recently. And I think it'd be beneficial to understand what's being monitored and what's being done to make sure that levels are low and our communities safe. So um if staff can work maybe to arrange that in the future, I think that'd be beneficial.
Yes, I I've um uh John communicated that to uh Larry and I, we had a discussion and I I did reach out to the DNR. We have made contacts there and um yeah, so we would just need to schedule that maybe um maybe late January or February is kind of what I was thinking, get through the holidays here.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yep, it's a good suggestion. Thanks, Heidi.
Yeah.
Um all right, now Troy.
I'll make that motion. Thank you, John.
Second.
First and a second to motion for adjournment. Yeah, non-negotiable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have wonderful holidays. Please stay safe.
Yes, please, please.